Kind of an agenda laid out here. I'm going to turn it over to Aaron and he's going to start to start out for us here. Thanks.
Well, good morning, Mayor Council and all of the members of the public and those that have been invited here to attend today. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here. We are here to address, as Council was wanting to take a look at, maybe facilitating a number of workshops that addresses homelessness, treatment, and new perspectives. We're excited to dive into these important discussions over the next few workshops, which will help shape our approach to homelessness in Grants Pass. My name is Aaron Cubic and I am the City Manager. And as we get started, I want to acknowledge the critical role that we all play in this process. Today, we're focusing on understanding the current landscape of homelessness, which is essential in identifying where we are, where we need to go, and the challenges that we must navigate. Throughout today's workshop, we'll hear from a panel of key local organizations that are directly involved in providing services to those experiencing homelessness in Grants Pass. These representatives will share their valuable insights into homelessness in our community, what services are currently available, and where there are gaps or barriers to meet the needs of those that we serve. Our goal is to provide a solid foundation for informed decision-making and effective collaboration moving forward. We'll also have time for questions and answers after this session, where Council will have an opportunity to engage with our panelists and explore more ideas or concerns directly. Before we get going with the discussion, I do want to emphasize that this is just a first step in what will likely be a series of conversations and actions moving forward. Our work here is to gain clarity, develop shared understanding, and build a foundation of trust as we move towards creating sustainable solutions for homelessness in our community. There are in front of you today, an agenda that has a number of questions that have categories from measuring from success, measuring success, mental health and treatment, collaboration support, future needs and goals. The way the workshop will work is, we did provide these questions in advance to your panel members. We'll be asking the panel members to go ahead and and respond, and they have four minutes to respond to each question. And we'll start with the measuring success. We'll go through the table. And then we'll move on to the next question under mental health and treatment, then collaboration support, future needs and goals. Afterwards, as a facilitator, trying to make sure we get this done in a timely fashion, I'm thinking we should hold all questions until the panelists have had an opportunity to answer all the questions that Council desired to ask. These are questions that we put out for Council and the top, the top questions came here in front of you today. So it would be advantageous, I believe, for us, if Council has no objections, that we go ahead and facilitate the panel to answer the questions. And afterwards, you have an opportunity to ask questions. So if there's something that a panelist may say that you want to follow up on, please make note of that. And then you'll have an opportunity to answer those questions after we've reviewed all the questions and heard from the panelists. So hearing no objections, we'll go ahead and move forward. We're going to start here with measuring success. And let me put that up there. Okay. Under measuring success, how do you measure the success and impact of your programs and services in reducing homelessness? I'm wondering if Brian, maybe you can start representing the mission, and then we'll go ahead and you'll have four minutes. We'll just move down the table and with your response. And also for a timing perspective, Karen here, our city recorder, has this little guy here, and it's green and then yellow and then red. Okay, yellow gives how many? Okay, it'll just blink. Okay. So yellow means what when it goes yellow? Three seconds.
That means go faster.
Yeah, when you're at yellow, you've got 30 seconds here, four minutes.
Chief Warren's not here, right?
No, you won't. No, no one's going to be.
Okay, yeah, all right. Well, thank you for having us and thank you for asking the questions. Really appreciate the opportunity. Measuring success is one of those challenges that all of us have in some way. And I would start with just saying, in some ways, we are 100% successful. Everybody that stays at the Gospel Rescue Mission leaves in better condition than they came. They, they received services that they were not previously receiving, and we consider all of those things successes. While they may not be our highest ideal at every point in the way of their departure, all of them are successes. For some, for some folks, the first couple of days sober after a long, long time of not being sober is a success. The first night in a bed is, there is the first time that they've had in years. That's, that's a success. And if we can get just a bridge into that program and get them going, we, we see all of those as successes. I gave you guys a handout that really kind of encapsulates some of the, the things that have happened through our program in 2024. So in 2024, we served over 50,000 meals. These are hot meals that are served three times a day. We helped over 388 individuals. I say over that because I did come up with the numbers in December before the end of the year. And we were at 388 in December, in mid-December, when I came to the numbers. But each, each one of these had a warm bed, clean clothes, fresh hot shower daily. And during their, during their stay, they received all kinds of life-changing benefits. And I'd like to go through some of those for you. And a lot of these come, not because we did them all single-handedly, but because we also partner with many of the people that you see up here at the, at the tables here. So things like 91 people got into drug and alcohol treatment in this last year from our program. Thirty-three established primary care physicians, 55 had visits with a primary care physician. Twenty-nine received mental health evaluations. Sixteen were able to see a dentist. Nine saw an eye doctor, nine met an audiologist. One hundred and fifteen of them quit smoking. Fifty of them were set up on the Oregon Health Plan. Twenty-one received birth certificates, nineteen acquired driver's licenses, two acquired learner's permits, thirty-three received Oregon ID cards. One hundred and sixty of them gained housekeeping and/or laundry skills that they didn't have before. Fifty-one learned to work in a commercial kitchen. Thirty-seven gained warehouse and delivery driving experience. A hundred and eleven of them earned retail experience. Twenty-two gained marketable leadership skills and two attended parenting classes. Twenty of them opened checking accounts. Forty-five of them made successful budgets and 51 paid off all of their debt. This is no small achievement. It takes a lot of work and it's really kind of a wraparound approach to what we do. So when, when people talk about what the Gospel Rescue Mission does, it's more than just three hot meals a day and a, and a warm place to stay. You know, there are all kinds of barriers that come to gaining somebody's independence. And what we do is we help them overcome those barriers. So this is part of, this is part of what it takes to do. And what's happened a lot is there's just been a tremendous amount of framing in the community that, that has happened to call certain things like rules and, and, you know, and basic, basic rhythms of life kinds of things that you and I might do every day, they frame them as barriers. And, and I would call that a barrier, the same way we'd call piano lessons a barrier to learning to play piano. There's just rules and structures to how things happen. So anyways, I'm out of time. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Tony from Hearts of the Mission took a little different approach. We have state and federal grants, so we are very data-driven in everything that we do. So I'm just going to kind of describe some of the systems we use. I don't have data right in front of me, but I can get it if you're interested. We, from a moment, and I'm going to talk specifically about our Transitional Living Program in Grants Pass, but you can really apply this to all the services that we provide in Grants Pass and Medford. We engage with youth and families from the moment they apply, looking at assessing their situation, what they need, kind of starting to develop some goals for them from the very first time we meet them. We assess them for safety in our facility, safety to themselves and others. We do, one of the assessments we use is called a Thrive Assessment. It's a psychometric evaluation tool to assess an individual's social, emotional well-being, often in the context of education and workplace, primarily focusing on areas where support is needed to help them thrive in their environment. Looks at factors such as emotional regulation, resilience, social skills, and allowing targeted interventions to improve mental health and overall performance. We, along with other homeless youth providers in the Northwest, use what's called a West Coast convening framework. So that's another assessment that we do at intake every three months, at discharge, and 180 days post-discharge. So we follow each kid and family that we support and continue collecting information and data. Essentially, it's a framework for measuring outcomes, evaluating programs aimed at helping homeless youth in the region, providing a standardized approach to data collection and analysis. And so that our contracting partners also review that, that data and information, and we use it for grants, of course. And really, how do we adjust our program? We use that data to say, what do we need to do different? We use the ACEs score. Each, each kid that we support does an ACEs score, and we really try to educate kids on those ACEs and how they impact their life. We use a discharge survey, which in our, we have a EMR called Best Notes that's very, has all sorts of data that we can extrapolate things out. And one of the things we use a discharge survey for families and youth that we serve. What was your experience? Where did you go when you got out? How'd you do on your goals, your mental health? How did you grow in those kind of assessment areas? We do a lot of case management. From the time we get an application from a kid, we're looking at like goals in mental health, physical health, behavioral health, education, employment, life skills. And then from the time a kid comes in, we're looking at what is your discharge plan? So that we can work toward what's it going to be when you leave Hearts of the Mission. Each kid has to meet with their case manager weekly, review their goals, see what they've been able to accomplish. And then we utilize our staff to help that kid accomplish those goals that they've set. We require productive hours. Each kid has to have 36 hours a week of productive time, work, community service, treatment, exercise. We also do aftercare forever if a kid needs it, but our requirements for contracts are 90 days, but we provide as much as a kid needs. And then we also use the HMIS system, which is an effective tool for data collection and where kids are going.
All right, I'm Cassie with Mintz. Thank you guys very much for having me. So for this question, the way we answered it, I do want to preface that, you know, this nonprofit was started by a bunch of medical professionals, and so we're obsessed with data. And so we take data pretty seriously and track a lot of metrics. But at Mintz, we utilize a combination of metrics to assess our success in reducing hopelessness, hopeless homelessness, sorry, with a key focus on the number of individuals we successfully house each month. That's our outcome metric. That's our main, what's we're striving for. And if we're not housing people, then we're doing something wrong. So this is our primary indicator of effectiveness. However, we recognize that true success extends beyond just housing these folks. Brian touched on that very well, so I won't go into great detail. But we track those things as well, such as how many people we get an ID, how many people maybe, you know, need help getting insurance, et cetera. We also look at ER utilization for the population we serve and number of EMS calls as broader community impact metrics. Our approach to housing folks recognizes that there are diverse pathways for each individual. For those who struggle with mental or substance use, a lot of times we have boots on the ground that have gained trust with these people. So what we do is we connect them to the vital resources in our community. An example of this real time was our medical director, Dr. Roberts, was seeing a woman the other day for an acute need. She had a wound, and in that time, she let us know that she was ready for treatment. And so right then, we call OnTrack actually was the one that we called, and they came down and they did an assessment right then. And so, you know, that's our pathway to housing for those folks is getting them to the right people. And then what we do is we come alongside that agency and that person and support them in that process, make sure they get to treatment and, and housing after that. And then the other group of folks that we help are those that kind of fallen on hard times. And maybe it's a financial reason why they've become homeless or, you know, some sort of trauma in their life. And so with those folks, obviously, our goal is to get them into housing, but there's a ridiculous amount of process metrics along the way to get them on a successful path. So we make sure they have disability, if that's appropriate, social security. You know, are they able to get a job? We look at long-term security for them financially. So that way, when they are placed, they are successful. And then as we house folks, we don't just say goodbye. We continue to check and monitor on them. And about 50% of the people we've housed so far, we're still actively case managing because we don't want them to be homeless again. And they still have skills that they need to learn. You know, housekeeping is a huge one. You know, I have a group of four people that are living at a home right now, and we have to check on them weekly to make sure they understand. You know, this is what we, this is what it means to live in a house now. You know, we have to take care of these things. So we do a lot of that work as well.
Hi, I'm Summer Walcott. I'm the Executive Director. I think I got it. Hi, I'm Summer Walcott. I'm the Executive Director at OnTrack, and I can't use microphones. The way we measure success specifically related to the topic at hand, which is, you know, working with people who are unhoused. We have, as a starting point, on Friday, I checked our, our numbers. We have 330 people on the waitlist for residential treatment right now, and that's for 47 beds. So there's 330 people on the waitlist. And a lot of times, by the time we find somebody, what, by the time there's a bed available, we can't find them because they're unhoused. They don't have, they have a, you know, maybe they had a burner phone. We just can't connect with them. So we developed emergency lodging, and our program for Grants Pass is going to be open within a month. So what we started last year for emergency lodging so far has had a 68% success rate, and that's helping people move directly from the streets to a treatment bed, whether it's withdrawal management, detox, or residential treatment. Any bed in the state that is the right level of care for them, we help get them into treatment. And the numbers so far, that's 139 people that were chronically unhoused with a severe substance use disorder that have been able to move into a treatment bed. From there, once they're in our treatment beds, not all of them go to us, but if they do go to us and for other folks that are in our residential treatment, we measure success based on them meeting their, their treatment goals, which includes discharging to safe, stable housing that will have the wraparound supports they need to continue their recovery. So our length of stay in residential is around 90 to 120 days. And then from there, we have transitional housing in conjunction with outpatient, where people are really focused on, you know, participating in outpatient treatment to continue learning the skills they need to be able to maintain the gains they have, continue living in recovery, relapse prevention, getting a job, things like that. That lasts about six months for most folks once they come out of residential treatment. And then, you know, successful discharge from there is independent housing and continued life in recovery and wellness. The other outcome measures we do, one of the things that I, I really like and we use regularly, in addition to all the required data tracking that we do, which is enormous, we do monthly client surveys where we're really, we just ask every single person who comes into any of our services on that day, every month, five questions, you know, are you, you know, are you getting the help? are you getting the help you need? Would you refer a friend if they had similar issues? Do you feel safe? Those sorts of things. So then we're getting real-time feedback from each of our different locations to see how things are actually working on the ground, and we can make rapid adjustments. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shelley Urich. I'm the executive director for Options for Southern Oregon. We are one of the main providers for mental health and substance use disorder treatment in Josephine County. We do work with a lot of individuals that are unhoused. We do gather current housing information when folks come into treatment, and we do have a process to ascertain whether folks maintain or lose housing. I think we do that on a quarterly basis, and we do have referral pathways to send people to case management if needed to help them work on some of the housing. Historically, we've been able to develop relationships with landlords to help get people housed, but given the lack of available housing and the cost, this is becoming a lot more challenging. In the past, we've been one of the larger low-income housing providers. We do have a new tenant unit, single occupancy apartment complex that is getting ready to open, that we're going to focus on individuals that are in mental health court and drug court as being the primary folks to, for admission. Some of the things that we measure, we measure a lot. Some of the key indicators that relate more to housing are, we track access to services, so how fast we can get people into services, and that includes mental health, substance abuse, and medication-assisted treatment. We track the number of individuals receiving intensive treatment, such as assertive community treatment. One of our big things we track is we track mobile, crisis, hospitalization, and emergency room follow-ups. So when people are in the hospital, seen in the emergency room, or seen by mobile crisis, we follow them for about 30 days just to make sure that they're facilitated getting into treatment. The best thing we can do is get people into resources. That's the best way to help recidivism for the ER. We track things like, we have ancillary programs that help people keep housing, such as supported employment, supported education. We have pretty strong statistics and monthly tracking on our employment success rates. We track multiple things, such as depression remission. We have a whole standard of normal metrics we have to follow, and we track for internal use. But I think the ones I mentioned are most related to housing. Thank you.
I'm Holly Feifield. I'm from Ucan. I'm the director of our housing stabilization programs for, well, a total of five counties right now. What I oversee currently is anything that has to do with housing and homelessness, veteran services, sheltering, any of that stuff within all those communities. I will just be very honest, I was off on Friday. I got to celebrate my son's birthday. So I was a little unprepared, but I'm going to wing it. I'm going to give you some information, hopefully that will help kind of understand where we are. So Ucan, looking at measuring success, could come in a bunch of different formats. It could be how much money we spend. It could be how many people we've housed, how many people we've prevented from going homeless. There's a lot of those, so I think I'll just give you a few numbers to just show you kind of where we are and what we do a little bit. It literally is about this much of what we actually do with these numbers. So people that we've sheltered is about 465 between Josephine and Douglas County alone. We do run a navigation center up in Douglas County as well. I do oversee that. So we see an influx of, it's a low, it's a low-barrier shelter, but not a no-barrier shelter. We do see a lot of, you know, coming and going. So our numbers do increase. This is based off of last year's numbers, so just bear with me. People that we have put into affordable housing within the last year is about 530 households. We prevented about 1,800 evictions, and we have prevented about 25 foreclosures. So Ucan focuses a lot on prevention of homelessness, I will say that, which is why we rely so heavily on our other agencies, you know, such as the ones that are at this table, to really bring forth what that need is. We do have an influx of funds. Those funds are very specific to what we are supposed to do with them, which could be outreach, could be, you know, sheltering, could be preventing homelessness, whatever it is. We do have a lot of money there. Doesn't mean that we can do all the work. It means that we need to rely on our teams and our people to get the work done, which is what we're ultimately doing with you guys here today and then everybody at this table. We have a, I mean, I would say for having the amount of money that we have, we do have a very small amount of people that work at Ucan in this department. So we do try really hard to get out there as well. We do have a recent homeless team, and that includes a supervisor and two outreach people. And so they're out there doing the work when they can and as much as they can. We do in-reach a lot. We request that individuals come to us so we can sit down in an office space, a warm space, offer them a space to have a conversation, and we do what we call a coordinated entry, which asks for some information that could be really uncomfortable so that we can get to know them, and that we can share that information instead of them having to do it themselves. Because what we're trying to do is prevent them from being re-traumatized to information and be able to share that and work together with agencies to provide them the best tools that they can to be self-sufficient, which ultimately is one of our success pieces, is providing them tools to become self-sufficient. We want to provide individuals and families who are ready to go and are willing and they, and they want to do it, to get into a place where they can take care of their own home, where they can pay their own rent, whether that's getting, you know, better income or getting on Section 8 or connecting with another agency, whatever it might be. That is our goal with our case managers. That is what they do every single day with them. Shelter, I say, you know, shelter's a little different. They have to do weekly meetings, and it's, in the shelter, it's up to them. It's not up to us. We don't determine what their goals are. We don't determine if they're ready or not. What we do is when you are ready, we're going to put that effort in there, and we're going to help you, whether it's getting IDs or income or birth certificates or reunifying. That's a huge thing for us, is reunifying with families, which is something we do often, is ensuring that there are families, there are systems in place for these individuals to go to, and we can get them back there if we need to.
Hi, my name's Jeremy. I'm with U-Turn for Christ. I'm one of the counselors there. What U-Turn for Christ is, a lot of people think U-Turn for Christ is we're the charity shop at the corner, but we're not. We've been around for almost 28 years now. We've been up here in the Grants Pass and Rover Valley for about 17 years now. How we measure success is program completion rates and long-term sobriety. We actively have 60 men go through different forms of treatment right now. Nationwide, we probably another 500. I think the best thing about the program is, is that we do track, we do monitor, and we have, we have three phases to our program. Phase one is two months, it's residential, whether it's real, it's intense, it's, they're with us, it's all faith-based. During that time, they're learning how to be part of, be productive in society, because a lot of us in our homelessness, in our addiction, we took a lot from, from our community. And so they spend six hours a day doing community service work. They come back and they do different things throughout the day as far as counseling and other things like that. And then, once they complete phase one, we move into phase two. Phase two is an additional six months where they learn living skills, they go, they got to find a job, they got to be productive. If they need driver's licenses or if they need OHP, we get, we take her, all that stuff. We've got people in the GED program. We have people going to college. And then, once they complete that, we move into the third phase of the program, which is an additional year commitment. Being a registered addiction specialist, one of the things with addiction is it takes the mind anywhere, depending on how long you use, how old you, and how, and for how much you use. It can take the brain anywhere, for the mapping of the brain for about two years to start functioning right again. And our program is set up in a way where it's about, if you run through all phases of the program, it's about two years. Like I said, how do I, success, I would, most, we promote in-house, and we have about 17 throughout the United States, U-Turn for Christ. We've probably got another 13 overseas. And all the people that came to the program were, they were broken, broken, at the end of their rope, a lot of them homelessness. And now we have all the pastors and all the ones that run U-Turn for Christ overseas and in the United States, they all came through the program. And so that is one of the biggest ways that we measure success, because they're, they're doing what they came in to learn to do, and now they're in charge of doing the same thing. And I have seen countless, countless families restored, lives restored, mental health restored just by going through the program. So that's how I measure success. Thank you for letting me share.
So what we'll do is we'll move on to mental health and treatment. And Jeremy, since you're on a roll, we'll have you start off. The question is, because we're having technical difficulties with the screen, how are mental health and substance use disorders currently being addressed within the homeless population? What resources or treatment are most needed?
I think it's a pressing need for increased access to comprehensive medical service, including clinical, mental health, professional, long-term rehabilitation support. I think what really needs to happen is we need a collaboration between all of us. Excuse me, can you hear me now? I think it needs to be collaboration between all of us. I think what, everything that we do is good, but I think we need to pull our resources to, it's, I believe totally that homelessness is a solvable solution. I believe there's a lot of stigmatism that goes with it. I don't believe in low-barrier housing. I think that we need, I think there, like Brian was saying, there's certain rules that we need to be applied in life. And I think that we need to give, we need to help these people and not enable them. Enabling is doing something for someone that they can't and be doing for themselves, but we have, I think all of us and all the other non-preference stakeholders, if we were to come together, pull our resources, develop a data-driven approach to this, I believe it's solvable. I think we, we can make a difference here. I think Grants Pass can be a model for other cities to come and take a look at. That's why we are really pushing hard for this Built for Zero initiative. We have a meeting February 6 with it. It's been proven in other cities. Places like Kern County and Bakersfield have reached function zero for chronic homelessness and veterans homelessness. It'll work. It'll work if we do it together. It'll work if we bring it here. I know it will. In my experience, I've seen when people work together and they pull together, there's nothing that they can't do. And I believe if we all together, especially here sitting at this table, and with the city council and law enforcement and everyone else, if we work on this Built for Zero initiative together, I think Grants Pass will bring function zero, where there's, where it's brief and it's rare and it's nonexistent. And I'm really hoping that we can all do that, that we will get past the bridges and the walls and the barriers that are between us, and we all pull together and realize that the only way that this is going to take place is if we pull together and do this together.
Again, I'm just going to wing it. So for me, looking at this question, I mean, I do agree that we all need to come together. I think that's incredibly important, that we all need to be sitting at the same table, having the same conversations, understanding what each group does, what each agency does, what the goals are. But I also think that we have to understand that not all organizations get a say in how we spend our money. We work through the state specifically to get funds. We also have federal funds, but we have state money, and we don't get a say in how we run a shelter. They tell us. So when you're saying, you know, no barrier, low barrier, I, I mean, I can say that there is some huge struggles within that, absolutely. I have worked at Ucan for 11 years. I've done homeless services for 11 years. I've seen it prior to that. I've now overseen a shelter for years now. I also overseen the Grants Pass shelter, warming centers for the last few years, aside from this year, thank you. And, and I will say, yes, there comes a lot of stuff there that, it's not only hard on the individuals that are, that are doing the work to, to make sure people are getting sheltered, but it's also hard on the people going into the shelter, right? I mean, there's a lot there that we don't know. Everybody has a story. Everybody has something that we don't understand, and I think that everybody coming to the table and understanding what that looks like is one thing, but knowing if you're going to utilize your resources, if you want to utilize the agencies that have the money, you have to understand, like, we don't get a say in how we spend it. They tell us, and we do the best that we can, and sometimes we get really creative. And I will share that, you know, our navigation center has a no tolerance for drugs and alcohol. And that is because we were able to get creative in saying that it is, it is a low-barrier shelter, but it is not a no-barrier shelter. And if your behavior affects the people sleeping inside this place, you don't get to stay here. If you have awful behavior and you're threatening people, or anything that you're doing affects the individual's, you know, right to stay there and enjoy it, then they will be exited. I mean, there is, there is a way around, and there is a way to be creative. I just want you guys to know ahead of time, like, our funding, Ucan isn't like, you know what, we're just going to make it to where we do whatever we want. That's not how it works. We have funders that tell us what we're supposed to do, and if we do not follow those guidelines and requirements, then we don't get that funding and ultimately affect the entire community. So that's just my tidbit.
So part of the question is, what resources and treatments are most needed, or what are you kind of offering? What we serve, Josephine County residents for mental health and behavioral services. We serve up, obviously, people, more people than are just houseless. But some of the things that we do to really help folks is we have a full continuum of care, and we make getting access to services very easy. We run an open access program for mental health, for substance use treatment, and medication-assisted treatment. So what that means is during our business hours, we run eight to seven, Monday through Thursday, and eight to five on Fridays. You can come in, and we're going to do an assessment and get you connected to services. The best thing we found years ago is remove the barriers. When you've got individuals that are in need of treatment, it's really hard to come in and say, hey, I'll give you an appointment six weeks later. So we took that out. We used to have a 30% no-show rate. We now have a 0% no-show rate, because when you come in, we're going to serve you. Another thing we do is we really work on a full continuum of care. So we have everything from primary care onsite, pharmacy onsite. We have application assisters onsite. If somebody comes in for services that doesn't have OHP, we can connect them immediately. We also have a sliding fee scale for individuals that may not qualify for OHP. We have supported education. We have supported employment, and then we have psychiatry therapy groups, skills training, case management, the full complement of behavioral services for both children and adults. We treat a lot of families. We have the hub, which is a drop-in resource center, which is low-barrier access to resources, including case manager, peer supports, and we can help connect individuals that come in for the hub with different treatment providers. We have mobile crisis services that we're able to go out into the community. We have individuals that are co-located within the police department, and we're closely with the police department. We have individuals assigned to probation and parole. We have intensive community-based teams that serve those with severe mental illnesses. We have an intensive outpatient program for individuals with substance use disorder that are waiting to get into residential services and/or who meet that level of care. We have supported housing. We have independent housing. I think we have 65 units with 10 more getting ready to come online. We do have waiting lists. Pretty much, we have, like I said, the full continuum, so.
Our focus is really, is similar to options in that we have a full continuum of care and work closely with other treatment partners, trying to, trying to help individuals get into the appropriate services based on their level of need. One of the things that's really challenging when people are unhoused is if their basic needs aren't being met, if they don't feel safe, they're, they're unsheltered, they don't have, you know, access to a lot of the things that most of us take for granted, it's really hard for them to participate in the wrong level of care. So if, if they need residential treatment or they need withdrawal management that's medically monitored, they can't just stop. It's, this is a, you know, there's medically necessary treatment that these individuals need. So it can be really challenging to try to get an individual to stop using, to participate in, you know, once a week outpatient counseling sessions or something like that while they're struggling to survive. And they have all their belongings with them, and they don't know where to go, and they can't get their medications refilled, or they lost them in the last time they moved. There's all these different things that come up for them. So really, at that stage, we're really talking about pre-treatment for a lot of folks, and that's where, you know, our peer supports are really trying to connect them with resources, helping make sure they have their OHP, or they get, you know, access to different benefits they need, help them get medications refilled, connect them with, with different teams that are really working on social determinants of health while trying to find them the right level of care based on what their individual needs are. Because without that, it is really challenging. For our emergency lodging beds, those are low-barrier. They're not no-barrier, because you do have to be on a waitlist for treatment, but they don't have to stop using. They just can't use openly onsite, because we know that they've been assessed to need 24-hour support before they can stop in a lot of cases. So while they're there, they can't use onsite, but they, they don't have to be participating in outpatient because they've already been assessed to need a higher level of service than that. So that's kind of the way we're addressing it. But really, when somebody's unhoused, it's, it's about connecting them with resources and helping them get the basics. Basic needs have to be met before they can really engage in kind of the higher level of counseling services that are available. of counseling services that are available. Thank you.
So, part of the question, I'm going to answer this in two parts. Part of it was, how are we addressing substance and mental health in the homeless population currently? And, you know, Mint started as a group handing out vaccines and then groceries and stuff, and we kind of came at this angle just wanting to get to know the unhoused. And at the same time, we had the opportunity to get to know the amazing peer support people as well. And so, what we've observed is, we see amazing organizations like OnTrack, Southern Oregon Pathways, Options, Adapt. They have people that come out and work with these folks, and they build trust with them, right? And they get them on that waitlist that she mentioned, and now they're on a waitlist for treatment. What Mint does is come alongside those folks, because they're putting in the work, and we let them know that they're not alone, and that they're supported, and we help them get their basic needs met along that way. It may look like us making sure they get to their outpatient appointment that they need to. It may be getting up to the methadone clinic. It may be getting them over to Choices, getting them a driver's license, whatever it is. But we come alongside those folks, and if you walk into our navigation center right now, it's filled of people who are waiting for a bed, or in the process of being case-managed by Options, OnTrack, or someone like that. And so, that's kind of our role and space, and I just have to congratulate our peer supports and our nonprofits that are doing this work, because I cannot tell you how amazing they are. Like, that is something that Grants Pass has done right. Like, our peer supports that go out there and talk to them, they do a really good job. And all we need are treatment beds now. I think if we had treatment beds, this problem would look very different very fast. And that was the second part of the question, was, you know, what are, what are we missing? And it is. You know, we have these people who are ready, who are desperate, they want to go to treatment, but there's no bed, and we've got to keep them engaged until there is a bed. So, beds are a problem, but really hard for the city of Grants Pass to solve, I think. But something that we need to be aware of. But something that we can solve for is the fact that a lot of these folks will go into treatment, and then they do have temporary housing, maybe for 16, 90 days when they get out of treatment, and they're still doing outpatient, you know, they're still working on their recovery. But then the resources kind of stop, because there's no, you know, sober-living environments are not enough. And that's where we see a gap as well in Mint, is people have gone through these programs and are doing really great, and then they're hitting that wall, because their financial means aren't at a place where they can afford rent just yet, and so where do they go? And so, yeah, just finding that next phase, so people can be fully independent is a gap for that population.
I'm going to second that peer support notion. Hearts of the Mission, we were very fortunate to hire our first peer support two years ago. She was one of the youth that was in our Grants Pass Shelter and some of our other programs. She's my best staff, far and away, my best staff. I've hired two more, they're my best staff. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm very proud of what's happening on the peer side. Mental health and treatment, I, I would say, just at Hearts, we, we, we utilize everybody at this table and great partnerships there. I don't have to name them all, you all know who they are. You know, I think Summer's comment really struck me in that we're not doing a very good job when we have 330 people that have said, I want treatment, and I want treatment now, and we have them on a waitlist for 40 beds. Like, I, I feel like, in my experience, my observations, we're, 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 more people are getting into addiction than we're getting out of addiction at that, at that rate. And Summer, I don't know if that's just your organization and those 40 beds, but, I mean, other providers are probably seeing the same thing. And so, I, I've had kids that, a couple of my shelter kids from youth shelter in Grants Pass, who were down at that park, they came to me and said, I, I don't want to do this anymore. Made all their appointments, we couldn't get her in at the time that she wanted in, and that's the key. Like Summer said, you lose them, you're going to lose them. If you don't get them in when they want in, when they're ready, they're surrounded by drugs and addiction and all sorts of stuff. If we can't get them in when we, when they want them in, more than likely, we're probably not going to get them. You know, the, the addiction thing, it hurts with a mission in my program that we've been doing since 2021, our transitional living program. We made the decision about a year and a half in to start requiring a clean UA intake. And before we did that, what we saw was a majority, close to a majority of kids weren't staying past 50 days. So, 50 days, when, when our program is set up for 18 months, 540 days, a kid can stay based on our contracts. We were, kids were leaving at under 50 days, a lot, most. Since I, since we changed that, we said, hey, we need to do a clean UA intake. We have not had kids leave under 50. And I think in the last year, we've had three leave in under 50 days. And the outcomes that we've had have just gone through the roof. Kids getting jobs, buying cars, good jobs, like, buy a car kind of job, healing in their mental health. And I would say, a lot of the kids that apply to Hearts of the Mission are actively using mostly marijuana. And, and I just found, we found that if we can get that kid to that clean UA, I, I mean, I've had maybe two in the last three years do a UA that was dirty after intake. We walk through the process after application. If they can't pass a UA, we're working with them, we're doing all the things. But if we can get them to that point, our outcomes go through the roof. It's really unbelievable what we can accomplish when you've got a sober kid, and how bad it is when we don't, so.
Well, you've got two big questions in front of, in front of us, as far as what are we currently doing for mental health? On that, again, a lot of the things that we do, really, because the, the term "mental health" is, is pretty, kind of a moving target in some ways. And, and so, when you look at, when, when I talk to people on the streets, when I talk to people in my, you know, in my circle of friends, and they, they say, why are people staying outside? You'd have to be crazy to stay outside in this kind of weather. What defines crazy? What defines a mental health issue? And, and the, the, the target continues to move. We're in the fifth generation of the DSM, and the things in the DSM today are not the same things that they were, they're not defined the same way they were in the original diagnosis. Whether or not we're, we're nailing it right on the, on the definition, it, it does take a lot of people who are willing to put in a lot of time. And what we have here at our table is a lot of people who are willing to put in a lot of time, you know, and, and a mental health crisis is just really hard to track. It's, it's really hard to change. We walk with a lot of people that come in with anxiety, depression, you know, all kinds of levels of, of agitation and dis, you know, dysfunction mentally, who, over time, with three hot meals a day and sleeping at night, and, and being made, taught how they can get along with the person next to them, walking through it in a safe environment, it's amazing how much of that changes a person in 30 days. And, and so, getting them off of, getting them free from drugs and alcohol is an incredible help to someone's mental health. And, and I'm not sure that I honestly, I'm not sure that I trust people in lab coats to tell me what the answer is in all of that, you know, and, and that doesn't mean that I distrust somebody in a lab coat, but, but we've got a problem that we've spent literally billions of dollars at, and we're getting a, a solution going the other direction. It's, it's not a solution. The state of California just ran into this this last year, as they acknowledged that they spent $22 billion, you know, over five years, trying to solve a homeless problem, and they saw a 30% increase in five, in five years in homelessness. This is, this is not a thing that is solved necessarily in, in just dollars. And in fact, one of our problems, I think, is that we, in fact, spend a lot of state and federal funds on something that we're not actually measuring actually the results. We're measuring what we're tracking. We're saying, look at all the measurements we're doing. We're measuring, we're measuring, we're measuring. We're saying, we have all these great intentions. We come down and we care on these people, we love on these people. And I think that all of those things are true. But if, if we're not, if our dollars aren't following actual results, then I'm not sure how we're going to ever solve the problem. I think that that's part of our challenge, is to really stick to and, and really press down on what are the results? I don't, I'm not as, as interested in hearing what you're tracking. I'd like to see what does treatment actually accomplish? And give me, give me numbers, because, and then, challenge that with, is it, is the dollars that we're putting in getting us the results that we're looking for? And so, I might be kind of the, you know, turning the punchbowl on some of that, but that's might be where I'm, where I end up in, in all of that, and maybe a little contrary to some of my colleagues here in some ways.
So, mental health and treatment is an important chord that we struck, and it was clear on the panel. And Brian, you started to discuss the second question with regards to mental health, and maybe you can elaborate, and we'll continue down the table. Are there opportunities for expanding access to mental health services or substance use treatment in the community?
Well, I think we've got a lot of people putting a lot of effort into it. I, I think, I think that if you look at the, the number of people represented right here, there's a, there's a lot of really good people, really well-intended folks, working hard on this. And I, and I think that this is, the, the challenge again, is, is to challenge our own efforts, to, to task ourselves with answering the question, you know, is my, is my work effective? And, and maybe looking at, you know, more of a, of a, just a cost analysis on, on the hours that we're spending doing what we're doing. Problem is, is that it's a real hard one to measure. How do you, how do you do that? How do you measure what's going on inside somebody's heart and mind? I, I can't know that. People ask me all the time, the, the people in the Christian community ask me all the time, how many people get saved in your, come to faith in Jesus in, in your program? And I, I don't know. I, I don't know how many people come to faith in Jesus in my church. I'm not, I don't know how many people do that anywhere. What, what can I know about what's going on inside somebody's heart and mind? All I can do is track their behavior. All I can do is manage what, what they're doing on the outside, and that's, that's kind of the, the angle that I approach things with, with the folks that stay at the Gospel Rescue Mission. What I know is that for less than $1 million a year, for 43 years now, we, we put about a third of the folks that come into our program, they leave us with a, a sustainable income that they're generating on their own and a home. And I'm not asking for the state to pay for it, and I'm not asking for the city council to pay for it, and I'm not asking for the federal government to pay for it. The only people that pay for us are the people that see the results and, and decide that they want to contribute to that. So, I'm kind of a fan of private money going into these things, because private money tends to, tends to ask a different result, and doesn't necessarily measure things by dollars spent. But it's really outcomes-based in, in that regard. And, and that's not to say, and I know right now, I'm probably stepping on toes of a lot of my friends here, and I'm not intending to do that. I know that these guys get good results. I know, because some of my results are their results as well, because we work together, because we, we send people to Options and OnTrack, and, and, you know, people that, that Cassie has dealt with, you know, end up in our, in our, and Tony have dealt with, end up in our program along the way. We, we can't help but work together. It's a small community, and it's a good thing. I would like to see, eventually, us start to look at mental health institutions, somewhere where we can actually bring somebody out of, take away their power of attorney, maybe for a short period of time, but get them out of the criminal environment, where they're not being victimized, where they're not being, where they're not being traumatized further, and get them into a place where they're safe, and then they can be reevaluated over time to hopefully get them to a place where they're whole and independent again. That would take a lot, and I, unfortunately, I think the only ones that'll be able to do that is the state, folks that are, that are operating under the state in, in everything. But I think that that's a thing that's well-needed. We need mental health institutions again. And I don't know exactly the route to go there, but I think that that's the big missing gap. And, so that's the direction, I would say, is the, is the, the big one that I'm not, I don't have any idea how to get that going. But I think that the state would highly want to regulate that, and I'm not in total disagreement with that, so.
So, we're on B, right? Thank you. Yeah, this is a, I'm kind of going to defer to people on the left here on this one a little bit, but I, I hope so. I hope there's opportunities, because, because we need it, especially on the substance use side. You know, we need more treatment, we need more recovery, we need more support after Yeah, it's, it's super important. Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that we run to, into Hearts of the Mission, with some of our kids and young adults that we support, like, there are times where we get kids in the door who are so clinically involved, like, in, in their mental health, that we cannot continue to serve them. And so, at times, we run into, gosh, we'd love to work with this kid, we'd love to see a good outcome, but we feel like we're, we're swimming in a pool that we don't know how to swim in. And so, oftentimes, that kid needs more supervision, more support than, than we can give them. And so, I, I would just throw in there, and, and I, I think it, the support does exist at times, but being able to have a, a young person go to a, a, a more appropriate program facility for a, a short season while we can, and then come back. Like, I always tell kids, you can come back, like, we want to help you, and you can come back into our program, but you've got to be stable in, in your mental health, and you've got to be safe. So, that was the only thing I would add.
Yeah. I mean, I think we've, we've expressed, obviously, there is opportunity for more substance and mental health facilities and resources in the community. I like to deal with the cards I'm dealt with, though, you know what I mean? Like, this is what we have now, so how do we work with what we currently have? And that's kind of been Mint's kind of focus, is, you know, while we want to continue to advocate for expansion of services, what can we do now with what we have? And so, I do think it's important, Council, just to point out that with substance use and mental health, sometimes we bucket those together, and solving those is very different. You know, getting beds for substance use is a very different problem than addressing the lack of mental health resources we have in the state of Oregon, let alone, you know, our county. So, I, I think that's important to call out. What Mint has done, like I said, with the cards that we've been dealt, is try to create a space to help folks. I mentioned before with substance use, but I'm going to focus in on mental health. We've created a safe place for them to go. And we've built trust with a lot of the folks that are unhoused with chronic mental health issues. And by doing that, that means sometimes they come into our navigation center, or they'll call me, but we have easy access to a lot of those folks, which means we connect them to their Options caseworkers on a regular basis. You know, I have Desiree from the Hub and Crystal on the CRT team, but they both work at Options, and they're on speed dial for Mint all the time, because we're constantly working with the folks that they're serving. Same with Lisa, she's a case manager there, and their folks, some of their folks come into our facility. So, what Mint has tried to do is just kind of assess what's going on in the community and figure out a way to help support those folks who are homeless with mental health issues, navigate the resources that we do have, and remove barriers for our folks at Options and OnTrack, et cetera, who are really doing the hard work getting these places into, or these folks into treatment or mental health services. So, I'll stop there.
Opportunities for expanding access is, it's such a tricky question. Oregon is ranked last or second to last for access to care for behavioral health treatment for years and years. And it, there's so many different things that contribute to that, that it makes it really hard to unpack. As a starting point, we have failed to invest in capital projects, just in general. It's really hard to find any grants that will allow for capital expenditures, so you can't get new facilities to expand. And a lot of the facilities that people are operating in are, are falling apart. And we lost a lot of those over time. So, beds have continued to close. I mean, going back to mental health institutions, I think we probably have a different definition of that, but... But, you know, we've closed psychiatric beds across the state pretty much every year until the last maybe two years, more beds closed than open. And so we have these people who need that level of care that are unable to access it. And for substance use, we have a ton of people that aren't even on our waitlist because we know that they need a higher level of mental health care than we can provide in our facilities. And if we tried to become a truly co-occurring facility where we could treat, you know, individuals that had severe mental illness as well as severe substance use disorder, then we would have to be able to hire psychiatrists. We'd have to be able to hire nurses. We'd have to be able to hire licensed professional counselors and there's just not enough of them. There's such, there, there's this huge gap. There's a gap in beds, there's gaps in the treatment continuum, and then there's a workforce shortage gap. So short-term, I mean, we have to find ways to build out the continuum of care so that people who want help can get the right level of care. And we have to find ways to get people to either relocate that already have those credentials and then get our licensing boards to move fast enough to actually get people being able to do the work in Oregon or provide scholarships instead of loan forgiveness for people who can't afford to, you know, pay, pay tuition and then do some sort of loan forgiveness process through school. Incentivizing on the front end with scholarships might entice some more people to get into the field or some other creative barriers, but it has to be addressed on both ends because I've looked, you know, I've looked at withdrawal management or detox beds, like what can we do to add those beds to our continuum because there's a huge need? And the reality is, is I don't think we'd be able to hire the people to operate those beds right now because there's just not enough healthcare workers. So it's, I think we really have to look at this as a, as a, you know, many-layered approach. How do you attract professionals that have the right credentials here quickly? How do we move them into the process of being approved providers in Oregon fast? And then how do we expand all the different levels of care that people need in order to get the help that, you know, the right help for their, for their needs? Thank you.
So the question's about expanding access to mental health services or substance use treatment in the community. I think it depends upon what level of care you're talking about. So there is access to outpatient services, but we need more is the supports that go around the outpatient services. Things such as helping people get their social determinants, their health needs taken care of, such as food, housing. I do disagree slightly with some of the people on the committee just saying shelters are not necessarily needed, but when you have somebody that's in treatment, trying to get into treatment and you don't have any place to have them sheltered, it's really hard to stay on your meds, it's really help to keep in services, get a job and do all those things that you needed. There's just not enough housing and not enough affordable housing. I would go into what Summer said about employment and recruitment, but I could talk all day long about the need for that and the ability to actually provide affordable housing for staff that would come into the community. Summer mentioned earlier about the waiting list for residential treatment, just in her program alone, there's over 300 on the waiting list, I believe she said. So when people are ready for treatment, they're being told they have to wait. By the time you wait, you're not necessarily in the same place you were when you were really able to access treatment. I did hear individuals today, Brian talked about mental health psychiatric hospitalization. The state hospital's been closed for civil commitments for years. There is no access. There is, we ourselves have three residential treatment programs and a crisis resolution center, that's 15 beds. We could do more residential treatment, but the problem goes down to staff recruitment. We've also looked at some of the things that Summer mentioned about detox. You can't find the staff, nor can we recruit them in because of the lack of affordable housing. So it's just this one big circle and it's hard to get off the wheel that we've created just by the fact that the inventory is low and I don't know where there is property to expand in some of these things. That's it.
I feel like I'm just going to echo a lot of what everybody's already said and you guys basically heard the same things through the majority of us. And I think that there's probably space for expansion somewhere, but maybe it's looking at utilizing what we have, like Cassie had said, and how do we do that, you know, and what do we know? But I think the hard part is when you have a bunch of people sitting at the same tables and they're doing the same work, maybe it's not a disconnection of services, maybe it's just that we're all utilizing the same services when we could be bouncing off each other and really working together to make it expand a little bit further. And what I mean by that is, you know, you know, Cassie talks navigation, right? They're there to provide those services and provide the resources that they need in a navigation center, that's what intended for. So when you have a navigation center, you're supposed to have multiple people, multiple agencies, multiple partners sitting at the same table, the same office, the same space. And if there's access in one space, it might be easier for people to access it and continue to access it if it's consistent. I mean, I could say all day, yep, staff capacity, you know, turnover's hard. When you work in social services in any capacity, it's hard. There's a lot of turnover. Keeping people is difficult. When they get there and they're like, this is not fun, they tend to go elsewhere and it's understandable. But I also think that if we're sitting at the same table and that same path, we have to understand that each one of our agencies probably do things different and we have to get on board with knowing that. You know, there's a lot of scrutiny around how some people do it or what we look at. You know, I always say, like I've said to everybody probably at this table, like our focus is prevention of homelessness, right? We focus solely on ensuring people are not going homeless because that's the start of it. Once they get evicted, once they're out of their housing, it's, that's the end game. It gets, it's hard to get back into housing. So we really focus on ensuring that they have the tools they need to stay housed. And that's making sure that they're accountable for what they're doing in their own home as well. You know, and Cassie had mentioned also earlier that they go into the home and they ensure that they're taking care of it. That is also what we do. We make sure that they're, we're in the home, that they're keeping their homes clean, that they're good neighbors, they're good stewards of their area, of their landlords. And if we're giving them the right tools and educating individuals, not only the people staying in those houses, but each other on what those things are, I think the people can sustain housing a little bit better and it would make it easier to get people housed. But I think we need to all be sitting at the same table and understand what each organization does. Because as long as I have been here, I will say, I've probably talked to an individual at this table or one of their staff members multiple times trying to find out stuff and then I learned, oh my gosh, they do that too. I think if we knew more, if we educated each other, if we talked more and we all understood that we might do it a little different, it might look different, but we all have the same goal, we might be able to accomplish something.
Yeah, a couple of things. I'm going to, kind of what Holly was saying is that I think that's one of the crucial things is that a lot of us are doing the same thing. And I think if we, I think we had what was called a sort of like a stabilization center where we could get people in, we can get them case managed. From then, we can move into an orientation section where the people that are waiting to go into counseling, I think that would be helpful also. The mental health thing and the substance abuse thing, that kind of goes hand in hand. I'm not a big fan of dual diagnosis. Like I said, depending on how old you long, how old you are, how much you use it, for how long you use it, it's going to take you about two years before you can get a baseline on where a person's mental capacity is. And so when they diagnose people and they say bipolar drug addict, I think that's totally wrong. I think a lot of the mental health problems that we're dealing with is because of substance use. I think you take the substance use out of the problem, out of the equation and you'll find that a lot of the mental health issues will go away. Not to, not, I'm not blanket polishing that for all, all people with mental illness. There is definitely some people out there that have mental illnesses and those need to be addressed that way. But I think once you do get rid of the substance abuse, you're going to find that number is going to reduce drastically. I think more and more that I hear, I listen around the table, I really, I, more and more, I think that the Built for Zero initiative is something that we should look at more and more here in Grants Pass. It's working in other communities and it's doing, just like Holly said, it's getting everybody at the table, figuring out what everybody does well and, and using, utilizing all, all our confined strengths, even our weaknesses in figuring out how we can help meet people right where they're at, meet them, meet their needs right where they're at. I think the biggest thing is, is providing a place to do that. We need, all of us here, we probably would agree there needs to be a spot to do that. Like I said, like we, what we really need is a stabilization center, place where we can get them in, we can get their names, we can figure out what they need. If they need mental health, we get them mental health, they need treatment, we get them treatment. If they need medical, we need medical. And if they don't want help, really give them a bus ticket out of town, in my opinion. But I think that we can meet the population here that needs help, wants help and deal something with, and, and do that. And then there's going to be those that don't want help and then maybe this isn't a community forum, maybe they can go to another town that allows that. But I think that Grants Pass is a beautiful community. I think the people here are willing to help people that are down, but they gotta want help. And I think that if we all pull, like I said, pulled our resources, collectively did this, collaborated together, not just keep doing the, if we got 20 people doing, if we had, you had 20 Michael Jordans on one team, the team's not going to be that good. They're all going to be able to, they're all going to play against each other the same way. But if we all pulled our resources and did, and figured out, hey, we can do this, we can, you can do that, you can case manage, we can go out, you can do medical, you can do housing, you can do all the different things that we have that we're able to do, I think we can put something together that'll be lasting. I believe function zero is something that can happen at Grants Pass and that's where homelessness is brief, rare and it's not occurring.
Thank you, Jeremy. So this one sort of piggybacks on the previous question, but in more specific detail. And if you have more to elaborate, that would be great. We're down to our last two questions. This question is, are there any innovative approaches? So from that point of perspective, I think Council's looking at, is there anything new that we haven't tried that we should be trying? Innovative approaches or new perspectives on homelessness treatment that should be explored or adopted in Grants Pass? Start with you, Jeremy.
I'm going to have to go back to the Built for Zero initiative. I would, it's by Community Solutions. It's, over 100 communities are implementing this. It's working. Houston, Texas has cut down homelessness by 63%. There's a lot of cities that have reached function zero in both in chronic homelessness and veterans homelessness. I've been looking at it. I've been reading up on it. It's, it's a great model. If it's working in other cities, it definitely will work here since we have it on such a smaller scale. If Kern County and Bakersfield can reach function zero, there's no reason that Grants Pass can't reach function zero. Chattanooga, Tennessee, Brentonwood, Illinois, countless, there's over 142 different communities that are actively working on this and there's a lot of communities that have over time reached function zero. I think it's something that the city would look at. If we would all at this table would look at with nonprofits and all would work at together, I believe that we could reach that function zero.
You know, and I think this sort of was what I was already saying, I, I truly believe that having a one space for everybody to go to and have a conversation and really be able to identify problems and solutions at one table or at one facility would probably be an overall improvement for us. Finding out what everybody's actual goal is, because once you start talking to individuals, I mean, their goal might not be to be here. I mean, I will say that there are a lot of times when they're like, I just want to go back home. I'm, you know, I want to go to Colorado, I want to be with my family, whatever it might be. And ultimately it's finding which one of us can do that and help there and who needs to have the initial conversation and, and what that looks like. And I think that it just starts with us working together because there's so many different stories out there. Not one agency is ever going to be able to fulfill the entire need. And I mean, there's a lot I agree with on, on what Jeremy's saying as well, then there's, you know, I'm, I'm a very neutral individual. I'm here to make some kind of change wherever we need it and we're here to help however that is. So.
I think one of the things I'm most proud of about this community is our willingness to collaborate with each other. I think we are willing to sit at the table and hash out problems, look at resources. I don't think there's any territoriality around clients. If we have a client that comes in, that would be better served by OnTrack. We send them to OnTrack and we help facilitate that. We have case managers that actually take people to the different organizations. I think that's one of the things that's the most important is we utilize what resources each organization has, helps people, help people get into it. I think one of the things we need to look at is maybe a housing first model. It's really important for folks, as I mentioned earlier, to have some kind of shelter, to get into stability, to get into housing, to get into employment, especially with individuals with mental illness or substance use. They may have law enforcement engagement, they may have paths that may help or be a barrier to getting into. So just helping people get into lower barrier housing while we work through some of those things. I think one of the things that we do well also is the, is making sure we're innovative. Summer's program of housing individuals before they go into residential are looking at access, providing a full continuum of care. I don't think there's any lack of innovation that goes on in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a, I mean, it's a tough one. I think, I, I agree with Shelley. I think the treatment providers are, you know, we collaborate quite frequently and, and we know each other's expertise and, and are referring clients back and forth between each other. A navigation center that's attached to a low barrier shelter, I know has, has had many hours of time in this room. But I, I really think that's a, a missing component of the, the continuum that we have available right now and would provide that point where all the different agencies that are, that are trying to do their part could have a, a space where they're all sitting together, somebody is coming in the door. It's not like them trying to figure out which agency to go to. It's what do they need and having somebody that, that can really provide those wraparound services, I think is really important. And it's part of the whole continuum that's needed, whether it's a low barrier shelter, whether it's housing first, whether it's hotels that are converted. There really does have to be something on the, on the front end. And then on, on the other end, we really need affordable housing. So it's the treatment continuum and, you know, we can, we can try and expand it all day long, but the question is always sustainability and whether or not we'll be able to pay our bills. And, you know, it's, it's all contingent on funding. So that's, I mean, that's our biggest barrier to things like expanding or dreaming up new crazy ideas is how are we going to pay for them and pay for the staff that, that are doing them? So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's anything new. I think it's really just focusing on the gaps in the continuum and then finding ways to fill those gaps. And, you know, a, a permanent navigation center, I think is a really good starting point. Thank you.
I'm going to pretty much echo what everyone said and I am really excited for the meeting on Thursday and to, to learn more about that initiative. I have read a lot about it and I've been really impressed with how Houston has solved homelessness. I, a lot of people, when I bring that up, they say, well, you can't compare Grants Pass to Houston. Houston has way more resources, more, you know, et cetera. And I think that our smallness actually works to our advantage. And to piggyback on what some of you said, we do have a really innovative community that's ready to do the hard work. So as far as our navigation center, you know, just so everyone is aware, our intent is to have every agency there. We have about four with designated times right now. So that was, and is the intent of the navigation center is for it to be a center. And I also, I mean, our mission statement for Mint is bridge the gap. And the reason we moved forward with trying to get another shelter is because we felt like that was a gap in the community that we heard consistently from the homeless people we served and our partners at the table, the ones that are doing the hard work, trying to get them out of there. They said, man, if they had a place to go, it'd be so much easier and we'd have a lot more success. And so that was our motive behind that. And the only other thing that I want to bring up is we are solving a problem now that we, you know, we haven't, we haven't been really doing much for the last three to four years. And so the problem is emergent. We want something done now. We're all really focused on fixing it now. But I want us to be mindful as we're fixing it now to think about what this problem looks like in the future, because the demographics of homelessness is changing, you know, there is data out there. And so the problem that we're solving now is not going to be the same problem in five to 10 years, which is really exhausting to think about. And I do think we'll get to a zero point, but you know, as we're reading data that elderly are being priced out of homes and that's supposed to continue until 2030, right? We're going to see a lot more aging folks who need housing and a lot of the things that we're talking about up here has nothing to do with age, right? It has to do with substance and mental health. And so always just keeping that in the forefront of our mind is how do we get ahead of that problem so that we don't have another crisis in the future?
Yeah, I was just kind of thinking about what, what you just said. Like I feel like the community's been like so static and like stuck in concrete for so long. I don't think we necessarily have, but I, I think the community has. And so I'm really appreciative to be able to come here and, and speak with you guys and have a conversation. And I, I admire the new kind of level of new kind of level of interest and wanting to hear from us. So that's great. So a little bit of my background. I came into this homeless addiction thing by a choice my wife and I made in our family, decided we were gonna live our life different and say yes to whatever came along. And whatever came along was young people in their addiction and homelessness. We live in Medford, so I can speak pretty eloquently about my observations and what happens in Medford. And so I've just got a couple of things. I wanna talk about Recovery Cafe. So it's what my wife and I started in 2017, but opened the doors in 2019. That's how hard it is to start something. Nationwide peer mentoring model originated in Seattle nearly 20 years ago. Very successful. We implemented in Medford in 2019. We currently serve 300 members every week in recovery. Those are a majority of folks who would be technically homeless. So we serve people from Rogue Retreat, Kelly Shelter. Treatment programs come. People who are leaving treatment start engaging in Recovery Cafe. It's, as long as you wanna be there, you keep coming. So there's no end to it. We're currently holding 26 recovery circles a week. Since 2019, they've been coordinating training for over 30 peers who have went on to lead circles, and most have taken jobs at OnTrack and Options, and the hospitals, and different places. So it's been a great way to build capacity and peers across the community. Recently entered into a contract with Jackson County Jail Transition Center and the Youth Corrections, where we have peers that go into those places and meet with folks who are incarcerated. We have a culturally specific program on Thursday nights with the Latino community, all Spanish, Mexican food. We have veteran circles, rock court circles, LGBTQ circles, and their allies, men's only, women's only, coed. And we connect with people just about every day. It's just been a phenomenal adventure for my wife and I, and it's changed our life and changed the life of about 1,200 people since 2019. We have thrown our weight behind, my friend Julie behind me, to open a Recovery Cafe in Grants Pass. And I can tell you, based on experience, it has significant potential in this community. I would like to mention Pathfinder's network in Jackson County. They have a contract, their nationwide model, and do a lot of work in Oregon. I'll just, I'll let you go on their website and read all about them. My observation, in my experience, they've been significant support to individuals who have been incarcerated on probation, and it's mostly peers, peer-led. Oxford Houses. We need Oxford Houses in Grants Pass. We currently have four. It's a democratically-run sober housing model. Medford has 14 homes with about 115-bed capacity, five women's and nine men's homes. Women's homes also allow children. We need Oxford Houses. I'm just gonna mention, you can do your own research, but a recovery high school that is in the works through Southern Oregon ESD in Medford. It's an amazing program implemented in a couple other communities in Oregon. Look it out, look for it. I think we need it.
As far as things that are going on in our community that I think are worthy of taking a look at, and, you know, in 2017, there was a study done by Baylor University where they looked at 11 major cities across the country, and they looked at and compared what were the outcomes from religious organizations that were working at getting people out of homelessness, and compared those to nonreligious, you know, usually state and federally funded types of housing. And their results were essentially, for every dollar that a government-funded institution spent on solving homelessness, the religious organizations saved the taxpayer like $9.48. And they did so while, according to the measurements that they, whatever their standards of measurements were, about a 68% better efficacy for the dollars spent. I'm a fan of running things privately. I'm a fan of private dollars in that I think almost every idea that I've heard here today is, as good as they could be, would be 100 times better if they were privately funded. I think that private funding is a big key. And of course, the lament to that will be, but that'll be hard and take time. And I agree, that's hard and it takes time. And I know personally that it's hard and it takes time. I run two organizations that are completely privately funded, and we do this, and it's hard and it takes time. But we get, we get, part of the way we get our funding is we measure outcomes. And that's really the, I think, something that's kind of a critical importance. Something that we're doing, as far as, we're trying to address, is one of the demographics in and amongst the homeless population that we really haven't been able to successfully, as successfully deal with in the community. And that's just the aging elderly, low-income elderly in our community. And so we've been working on, and I know most of you are aware of a project we're doing called Mission View Village, that we're hoping to have open, hopefully by spring of next year, is my guess. I mean, if enough money floods in, I might be able to have it in before the end of the year. But there's, there are just challenges with coming in, with how do we, how do we take out of this homeless population people that aren't necessarily struggling with mental illness and/or drug addiction? And what about those folks that are just there because they're aging and they can't compete in the marketplace, you know, financially, competitively, both in the employment marketplace and in the housing market? And so those are, it's an area that we're working to address. And my hope is that we'll be able to build more over time. One of our challenges that we're gonna run into is really just zoning issues, you know, following city, getting things through city planning. And maybe those are some things that, as time goes on, we can look at, help us build this thing, you know, help us. Maybe there's some SDCs that we can waive, or there's something we can do to help make this thing a reality. Those are some practical steps. I think that'd be really helpful. Thank you so much.
So Brian, you led us right into the last question of the panel, and that is, how can the city assist in facilitating long-term solutions? And you talked a little bit about permitting or system development charges. Do you have any other suggestions? And the city council's wanting to know if this panel has any suggestions for the city helping facilitate long-term success.
Well, I appreciate that. I do think that, you know, if we wanna have housing built, we've gotta make it easy to build a house. And that means that the process has to be smoother and more streamlined. And I would argue, if you wanted to get a good earful of suggestions, start talking to some of your civil engineers in the community. Talk to the people who are actually coming in and trying to build something. Talk to the people who have money and would like to spend it in our community. But then they come up against a city building code that says something like, well, you can't have a long wall with a single straight line in it. You have to, you have to change the line every 40 feet or however long it is, so that it's more pleasing to the eye. Well, it's more pleasing to the eye, and it adds 30% of the cost of a building. That becomes problematic. And those are things that we could probably just do away with. We could, we could figure out, how badly do we need those things? And really, do we need those things worse than we need more business, more building, more housing? I would make a plug for the guys that are doing the home bridging projects in Josephine County through Edgewater. I think that they're doing some of the most innovative work out there. And right now, just the cost of building, they're doing it with no profit in mind. And they can still barely make it pencil out financially, to where, they're not looking to make a profit, they're just looking to get somebody into a home. And they can't make it pencil out because of the costs of system development to get this thing working. And those are things that I think everybody here agrees that housing is, you know, plays a part of it. I don't think it's part of, I don't think it's the reason for homelessness, not by a long shot. And I don't think even a Housing First model is the right answer. But I do think that, that said, we need more housing. And that will certainly have an effect. It'll bring in professionals into our community. It'll bring in the people that might, we might wanna have as employees into our community when there's housing available to them. And those are a pretty big, pretty big deal. So those are the kinds of things that I would look at. We're looking, again, to build this Mission View Village project, and we're just now able to, we have enough money to start scratching the ground. But I can't scratch the ground till I get it past city planning and all of that stuff. So I'm gonna be looking for help in every way we can. And I'll bet these guys all have projects they'd love to see get done as well. It's gonna take all of us. So thanks for the opportunity to just share and having this meeting. And by the way, we all do tend to talk. I've been doing this for 15 years. I know what everybody at this table does. It's not new to us and everything. I think every one of them does their own virtual navigation center right out of their own office. And I think that that's really necessary. And I think it's important. Every one of them that's doing something like that is doing something really good work. And so let me just go on the record for that. And thank you, guys, for all standing together with us on this. I really appreciate it.
I'm watching that peeper. So I'm a little all over the place on this one. I don't have a lot of specific things. Part of it is, I don't know where you guys end and we begin. And I'm hoping to be a little more educated on that. But just my thoughts, we need to prioritize vulnerable populations first, senior, disabled youth. If we're not getting upstream to address youth who are at risk of homeless and addiction in high school, then we can expect they'll just add to the problem. Again, I'll shout out a recovery high school concept. We gotta be working upstream with intervention and prevention. Facilitate housing opportunities. You guys do have that capacity to do that. We need to make getting low-income housing easier, and we need it. I can work with a kid for 540 days that gets a job, decent job, not great job, buys a car, has transportation, and I can't get them into housing. It's tough. No rental history, not good credit. Those are all things we work on, but that's pretty sad. Continue leading the focus conversations that we're having today. These conversations help find common ground. We need to be firm in addressing drug use by our youth. Kids are using drugs at a younger age. Many of the youth I work with and members of Recovery Cafe started their addiction as young as 11 and 12. That's the common theme, 11 or 12. We need to support these kids with treatment resources and people to walk alongside them. We need to keep them in school. You know, it's, I think that we all see the humanity within the problem. As a former outsider who moved to the inside, each addict and homeless person is a person, most often with a lot of trauma, generational poverty, addiction, and mental health challenges. Let's not be a community that defines people by their mistakes and their past. My own life has been changed by the people in this community I've built relationships with. You can help change the tone by the tone of the council. Please know that people can change, and people can grow. To do so, people need others to walk alongside them and not vilify them. Many of the community leaders I know in Medford were people from the parks, from the greenways, from the jail cells. I think of the manager of Recovery Cafe in Medford, spent most of his life incarcerated, overdosed seven times. That's the guy that officiated my son's wedding. If our city council can't believe it's possible, then our community won't believe it's possible. Continue to support organizations doing good work. Help us help you. As we are doing today, let's look outside the box. Get the county leadership on board. You guys gotta play together. I don't know how we can do this without doing so. Understand that all of the organizations here and not here are also grieved by what's happening in this community. But we each have the unique perspective that we've been the ones that have gotten to know these folks. We've done so deeply, and those relationships are what drive us. Study closely what happens in Jackson County. It's amazing. As noted in a recent meeting, let's get over there and talk about what's working. Have conversations with community partners. Create more opportunities for affordable housing and a housing continuum from shelter to homeownership, and help us create employment opportunities for people moving toward living wage jobs.
All right. I wanna echo what Brian mentioned. I think making it easier, one thing that you can do when we're trying to build and do capital projects, it is a lot of red tape that we have to go through with the city, so that is something that would be beneficial. And I think what we're doing now is great. And I, that was really my main answer to this question, was we have amazing boots-on-the-ground people from all these agencies, and they're all going out there and just listen to the boots-on-the-ground. They know how to solve the problem. They really do. They just need your help and support and guidance. And I do wanna echo, Brian mentioned a few others. You know, we do all work really closely together. You know, PATH has brought nonprofits together. The Josephine County Prevention Task Force has created a Boots on the Ground meeting that, you know, happens quarterly, and it's amazing. Like, every single person that touches a homeless individual is there in that room, and they're sharing resources, innovative ideas. And it's really just a beautiful thing. And those are the folks that can help us solve this problem. They know the answers. And, yeah, so just ask that you guys continue to listen to us, the ones that are out there. And then lastly, I do wanna give a shameful plug to Recovery Cafe as well, and I'm really excited that it's coming to Josephine County in Grants Pass. And my brother-in-law is alive right now because of Tony and his wife and Recovery Cafe. He should be dead on the greenway, but they have pulled him back to life multiple times, and he's thriving. And so having that kind of stability for our folks that do get out of recovery is critical, so they can continue to be successful.
Yeah, I'll be super short on this one. I think when there are opportunities to approve or not approve of projects, you can have a huge impact. If, you know, if we find funding to open more transitional houses, and we have to bring the project here, you know that half the room is gonna be in support and half the room's not. But we have to add more recovery housing, Oxford housing, things like Recovery Cafe. There has to be this continuum of services and affordable housing, so that we can, when people are coming out of treatment, they have, they can get into affordable housing, and so that we can attract a workforce, and to prevent more people from becoming unhoused, because they can no longer afford their housing. I do think the senior issue is gonna be coming fast with, you know, people who are living on social security and the cost of living, it's really scary. So if there's, if there's, if there are things that are coming here for approval, for land use, for permits, whatever it is that is needed for a project, remembering how badly we need to expand our continuum of care would be very helpful. Thank you.
I definitely don't think there is one answer to this question. I think it's multifaceted, and I, you guys got a big job on your plates. One thing that, or several things that could be helpful for us would be finding ways to make the city more attractive, to attract healthcare workers, which would mean helping find lower-to-mid-level housing for people to be able to move here. Maybe supporting technical assistance programs to give our youth pathways to get into employment that provides living wages. youth pathways to get into employment that provides living wages. This is just a personal thought. I have heard a lot about building rules. We've experienced some of the building regulations ourselves. It is very hard to even find land right now to help build, and I've always wondered why Grants Pass doesn't build up when, I don't think I've seen more than two or three stories, four stories in Grants Pass. When you look at some of the bigger communities, there is taller buildings. I don't know if that's a concept people wouldn't be willing to look at, but just working to support those of us doing the work and doing the innovative projects and to try to help solve the problem.
I really don't think I'm going to say anything that's different, and you guys have already heard multiple times. I think that there's such good points to each person that said it, and I agree wholeheartedly. Coming together has not been hard for us. I do think that we need more private funding. I totally agree with Brian. It makes things a lot easier for everybody to be able to access that. We need, I think this is a great first step right here, I will say that. That was ultimately just my answer, was I think that starting right here is ultimately how we get where we need to in this community, is being able to have you guys hear us, knowing what your goals are also as community leaders, and then just moving forward with whatever we need to as agencies and as members of this community. I think most of us have probably lived here most of our lives and just want to see a good outcome. That's it.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to kind of agree with Brian. I think private funding is the ways to go. We've been privately funded for a while. With that being said, there's a lot of private grants out there, and if the city had grant writers or something that they could make available to some of us, possibly, that would, that would help a lot. I think definitely affordable housing, possibly maybe the city had a piece of property or a building that they could give at a low lease, where we could form a stabilization center and an orientation center where we all could work at it, would probably be good. I know the city's taken a lot of flak over the closure of the camps, but I think a lot of people should know, by the closure of those camps, a lot of the bad actors left, and by you guys doing that, some of the homeless, the homeless population was brought down. So, I definitely want to applaud you with that. I think also, I want to thank the New City Council for having this meeting. You guys just came into office and doing this, so obviously you guys care about making a difference in the homeless, with the homeless situation. That's obvious. Really, I think most of what everybody said here is true, affordable housing. I know one of the things, one of the projects we're working on at U-Turn for Christ is we are converting shipping containers into ADUs with the thought of being able to address veterans homelessness, and then move on to homelessness with building those. I think if there was a spot that we could build a few of those on to get people into housing, that would help too. I think if we were to take a look at, there's, I know there's tiny cities that are being built in other towns, if that's a possibility too. There's just, I think this is a good start. I think if we have more of these meetings here, more collaboration, I think that we'll, we'll reach Function Zero. Thank you.
Well, that includes the designated questions that we put out in advance. I want to first start by thanking council for entertaining the concept of having these in place, and then providing me with feedback with regards to what questions you'd be wanting to ask your panel members today. And I also want to thank the panel members today. Obviously, this is an important topic to you. You live it every day, but you spent some extra time of your day, and even before this day, in advance, looking over the questions and having some real thought put into those responses. I know myself, and council greatly appreciates that. It's just a testament to your commitment to this subject matter that we've been dealing with, so thank you very much. Mayor, at this time, it ultimately would be open to questions of, additional clarifying questions to council. I don't know if you'd like to go ahead and facilitate that from a council perspective?
Sure.
If there's any additional questions, and then ultimately, we can address it later on in our general review, or after the question and answer part is fully complete, maybe potential next steps, or we can go into that at a future workshop.
Sure, sure. I'll take over. Thank you very much, Aaron. Thank all of you guys for coming out. I appreciate your guys' time. This was a lot of what, I think, a little bit of what we've already known. To me personally, this is a lot more information than I've been striving to get, and to see all of you guys here. The, I take the role of being a representative of this community as being a collaborator, and to get you guys all together in one room, I think is, is an amazing, it's amazing feat. I love the fact that Jeremy's going to have another one of these organizations, and I employ everybody to attend. I definitely would like to attend that as well. I think continued collaboration is amazing. Yes, I know you guys have collaborated behind doors, you know, within your day-to-day operations, but the public doesn't see it as much. And to have this in a public venture, I think is great. It gives you guys so much more power and more support within the community. So, at this time, I think we might have some questions, maybe a little bit more poignant to get some more answers, and I'm going to open it up to the council here. Kathleen?
Yeah, I have some clarifying questions, maybe for On Track first. Was my understanding that you had started a school to train people to do drug and alcohol counseling? How, could you talk about that a little bit, and how many beds you keep full, and how many staff you keep on, able to facilitate those beds at HUGO? That's your inpatient, right?
Yes. Okay. Let me see if I can answer all of those. We do have a counselor training program that is to help people become certified alcohol and drug counselors. We start a new cohort every six months, and it's an 18-month program. So, they work in one of our programs while they are getting all of the education and preparing to pass the test as a certified alcohol and drug counselor. That, right now, I think we have 16 people participating in the program. So, that's that question. Then the next question, I think, was how many beds do we have? We have 47 beds total. That's 21 for mothers with children zero to five. Then we have 10 beds for dads, children zero to five can stay with them. And then our HUGO facility is for adults, and that's 16 beds. And then we have three outpatient clinics. We have one in Grants Pass, one in Cape Junction, and one in Medford. Total employees right now, I think, is 151. Did I get all of them? Okay.
Maybe I just had a question about the transitional housing. So, I think, you know, my understanding was that people needed 30 days clean before they could get into treatment. And if you don't require in your transitional housing for them to have a negative UA when coming in, how do you expect to get the 30 days for them, enable them to get to treatment?
That's a really good question. So, we have the emergency housing on the front end, that's our pre-treatment housing, and that does not require that they are abstinent. To get into residential treatment, in order to meet medical necessity, if you've, if you've gone 30 days without using, you wouldn't get a bed. You, people are actively using up until the point that they move into residential treatment typically, or withdrawal management, they'll go straight from detox into residential treatment. So, we do not have that requirement going into a treatment bed for our transitional housing. Those are recovery housing, and those require that you have graduated from residential treatment. So, that means that they would have stopped using, you know, however many, I mean, most of them, it's 90 to 120 days, because that's the length of our residential programs. So, those are the, those are our housing programs that require people are fully abstinent. Residential treatment, they're using before they get there, and then they're required to not use while they're, while they're in treatment.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else got some clarifying questions? Victoria?
I wanted to ask you about Function Zero. If you could give me a 30-second, one-minute rundown of that, please.
What Function Zero is, it's off of the Build for Zero model that a lot of cities are implementing. It's like we were talking about, you get all the stakeholders, the city officials, law enforcement, nonprofits together, and they work at, it's a, it's a housing first initiative, data-driven initiative, where you get them housed, you find out what their needs are, you meet their needs. If they need treatment, you give them a treatment. If they need mental health, you give them mental health. It's, it's just pulling all the resources of the community together to address the problem, and that's basically what it is. And Function Zero is a, is a metric that they use in other cities when they reach, when homelessness is rare, it's brief, and it's not occurring anymore. And it's a lot of these communities that have implemented Build for Zero have reached that, have reached Function Zero, where there's no homelessness at all anymore.
If I could ask a quick follow-up, so would it be, help me to envision what that would look like here. So, would there be a board on which, maybe, let's just say, you're the board here, and, and you get together to get us, get us to zero? Are there, is there protocol that has been used and is reused in Houston and elsewhere? Is, so is it a set protocol, or do you guys, does the board decide what that is, or is it somewhere in between?
That's a really good question. So, that's why we are putting together this Thursday at 12 at Calvary Chapel Grants Pass. We've invited everyone to come together to see what that looks like for Grants Pass, how we can model what's being done in other cities, not so much build on the same foundation, because that, you know, building on another man's foundation never works, but mold it to how it will work for Grants Pass. And that's why we invite all the city council members, the mayor, city manager, if, we would welcome you to come. We're going to be serving lunch. I don't know how long it's going to go for, but that is exactly what we're doing. We're trying to get together and see how we can implement that here and what it looks like for Grants Pass.
Repeat the time and place again, please.
Oh. This is Calvary Chapel Grants Pass. It's going to start at noon on Thursday, February 6.
Thanks. Andrea?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here, really. We appreciate your coming and your expertise in your area. I know you work tirelessly with what you do, and that's very much acknowledged and appreciated. I have a couple just general clarifying questions, so anyone can speak up to that. So, obviously, we don't have enough treatment beds or mental health beds. Do any of you send people away out of the area for treatment? Yeah.
Make sure to use the microphone when you respond.
Yes. We all, we all do. There's, there's a shortage of beds across the state, and so, you know, we might have somebody from Grants Pass that's on the waitlist for our Moms program in Medford, but they have to go up to Eugene for detox first. Or, we might refer them over to Central Oregon because of the type of program that, you know, Best Care has. So, we're, the whole state's residential treatment system is referring to each other and knows how to get access to each other's beds.
So, mental health beds are statewide resources, so we do have residential treatment here in this community, but we actually don't, we can accept referrals, but there's an outside entity run by the state that actually kind of approves or approves continuation entry and when people are discharged for services. So, we refer out, people refer into us. Just because they're here doesn't mean that they live here. It could be from anyplace else, because that's how the state has set up the system.
Could I speak into that?
Yes.
So, one of the things, piggybacking on what she's just said, when the, and this is another reason why I'm more of a fan of privatizing some things, because the state has taken the authority on what defines treatment. And because of that, you, you know, things like what U-Turn for Christ does, doesn't get counted as treatment, but I guarantee you, they've seen as many people come off of drugs and alcohol completely, and in their time, as anybody in any treatment bed out there, and the Gospel Rescue Mission serves the same. So, so there's, there's a bit of a, there's a bit of, when we start getting into the topic of treatment beds, it's what qualifies as treatment. And, and so, and while I agree, there's not enough treatment beds, I would say it's, there's some self-serving kind of, you know, rhetoric that ends up going around, and that not by the folks that are here, but by the state itself, in saying, this is, this is what we do, and it's funded, and this is why we need the money to do this, and need to manage this money to do this thing. We determine what the, what's the only acceptable outcomes. We determine what's the only acceptable process. We determine what equals treatment. And, and so I guess my, my challenge would be, if we were to be able to get some, maybe push for disclosure on efficacy of treatment, that you might actually, and change, change the definition in that route, you might actually see that many of the, you know, whether it's Gospel Rescue Missions or possibly Recovery Cafes, there's probably, there's probably a ton of small, little church-run organizations that do absolutely wonderful job, and are absolutely as effective in the out, in the long-term goal of getting people off of drugs and alcohol, and they do so without, without ever once entering in a state-run treatment thing. So, there's, it can kind of become sticky, as long as they control the language, then you have to stay in their lane with the language. But if you start broadening the idea outside of that state-run language, you start finding out, there's a lot of other people that work here, a lot of other organizations that work here, that are getting every bit as good of efficacy as, as what you see in treatment. And so, and it's not the only area that this kind of an idea runs in, as Rob would probably tell you, in healthcare and things like that. So, there's, there's a lot of other areas where healthcare, once we, there's a lot of things you can do in healthcare that don't qualify as healthcare, because it doesn't fit into a state-defined term. And this is a reason why I think that we really need to really begin to explore privatizing a lot of things. Start defining terms and stop using kind of general, you know, general language that sounds, sounds really official but ends up kind of being mushy, and it's, what is it exactly that we're, we're talking about here?
Kind of want to piggyback off what Brian said. There's two terms for, there's faith-based treatment, and then there's secular treatment. The numbers, they're not that much higher, but faith-based is a little bit higher. And so, I agree with Brian. We need to kind of, the definition of what treatment is, it kind of needs to be looked at again also. It's definitely a hindrance for a lot of the things that we do. Like I said, we are, we're privately funded, but because we are faith-based, we kind of get excluded out of a lot of things that I know the Gospel Rescue Mission does. And as far as do we send people, we absolutely, one of the things that we do here in Grants Pass, if you're from Grants Pass, we generally don't take you here, but we'll send you to one of our, we got one in Washington, and we got a couple in California, New Mexico, Arizona. We'll, we'll take, we'll take you to another one, because we found that if you're from the community, that you have a better chance of success if you're not in the community, because in treatment, it gets hard, and it's supposed, it's not supposed to be easy. You're dealing with a lot of stuff going on. And so, yeah, absolutely, we have a lot of different reasons. We send people to Gospel Rescue Mission, and the Gospel Rescue Mission sends us people all the time, so we do coexist that way a lot.
Thanks, Jeremy. Tony, did you want to add something?
All right. 300 people a week come into Recovery Cafe in Medford. A lot of success stories in there, and not everybody went to treatment. Not everybody can go to treatment. And so, what we see is people coming in with 24 hours clean. You've got to be clean and sober in the space. They'll come in with 24 hours clean, or ability to be in the space, they'll find some hope, and like Summer said, like, they go a week without using. They have all this support, these peers, a great recovery circle. Now, they're not eligible for treatment. I think one of the reasons we push for treatment so much is because it often comes with a bed. And we're trying to stabilize that person in their living space. space with a bed and treatment. Excellent, great. But treatment's not for everybody. What about the mom who's trying to raise her kids, has an addiction? Happens a lot. What about the dad or the mom who's got a job, and they're functioning at it? Like, they're one step from losing all that. They need outpatient. Maybe inpatients, not for them. Like, we always tell everybody at Cafe, however you want to get clean, do it. We'll support you on it. If it's going to the gym, finding a faith community, Christian faith, Muslim faith, whatever it is, we're tired of people dying. And I don't care what route you take to sobriety, we'll walk alongside you to get there, and we'll love you every step of the way. So I kind of want to shatter the myth that we always have to have treatment. What we need is people. We need to get people out of isolation. We always tell people, isolation's going to take you out, and toxic relationships are going to take you out. And we can offer you an environment where you get both of those needs met, healthy relationships and people.
Thank you. Eric?
First off, I want to tell everybody that thank you so much for coming. This is a good, excellent first step here with trying to get this taken care of. I am intrigued, however, with this permitting process on behalf of the city. I don't want to put anybody on the spot. I just wanted to see if maybe we can talk more about this in terms of barriers, more specific barriers that you see with the permitting process, things that we can look at and explore and try to minimize, I guess. Because the city might not be aware of these situations, as well as, I mean, it's a two-way, two-way street as far as the communication. I've heard that it is, there's a lot of red tape, maybe not with Grants Pass, but other cities out there with the permitting process. Everybody knows that permitting process, nobody, it's not a fun thing. So I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but if you have specifics that you think that we can look at as far as improving with the city, please, by all means, that's what we're doing this for. Thank you.
That is kind of a loaded question. I know you guys have brought up a couple examples. I'm going to kind of take you guys off the table on that question there, because realistically, we do have, one of my pet projects here is to come up with a committee that's actually going to be diving into building code and helping with STCs. I personally, I eat, breathe, live building code in my profession, so I know that the city, no disrespect to anything, but the city's code is antiquated, it's bad. One of my missions in the next four years is to try to help with that. So let's alleviate that question right now. Does anybody else have any clarifying questions? Kathleen?
Yeah, I'd be curious to know, with the Measure 110, how many of you have actually benefited from the calls for the assessments and benefited from the money that was being able to be accessed to improve your programs?
We were a recipient of Measure 110 funding. We actually funded our hub with that. So it is loosely based off Recovery Cafe, but very loosely. We do have peer supports there, case managers. It's more of a resource center. We have community partners that come in and present, different people come in at different times of the week. And like, we have HIV Alliance that comes in, we have Department of Health and Human Services that comes in, we have our Application Assistors that can go over and help connect folks. So it's one of our strong programs that came out of that. I can't, I'm sorry, I just don't know the numbers, but we're growing. Every week I look at the numbers, or every month that I've looked, and I've gone, really? Is that right? And I've gone back and recounted, because it's used quite a lot. We're hoping if Measure 110 gets taken care of and we get funded again, that we'll actually be able to expand our hours. Right now, it's Monday through Friday, so we're hoping to use that to go on. I don't think, across the state, we've gotten very many assessment referrals. I'll let Summer talk to that one. I think she knows the best.
Yeah, Measure 110. The Class E violations, that the phone call screening thing, I'm guessing is what you're asking about? No. There have, there have been very few of those, just based on the structure and the model of that. I think it was, you know, there were issues. That being said, we are a recipient of Measure 110 funding, and it has made a significant impact. In Grants Pass specifically, our transitional house for women who are graduating from treatment, and Moms with kids is funded by Measure 110. The house was funded by Measure 110. Our emergency lodging projects were funded by Measure 110. And we were able to add numerous peer support specialists that, you know, that are out helping engage with folks, connect people, reach out when they're struggling. We've had several of those positions with Measure 110 funding, and our mobile assessment staff, which are the folks that can go to the jail, hospitals, emergency departments, things like that. If somebody says, you know, I do want to stop using, we can get one of our, they're funded by Measure 110. We can have one of our certified alcohol and drug counselors go onsite and do the assessment right there, and connect them with either an outpatient team. A lot of times, people don't need residential treatment beds, but outpatient is treatment as well. So connecting them with whichever level of care that might work best for them. Those folks have been really helpful in the process. And so that funding is all ending in June. I think most of us that have that funding have reapplied, but the decision-making process is ongoing. So we're not sure whether we'll be, you know, whether or not we'll have continued funding.
So speaking from Recovery Cafe Medford's perspective, we got Measure 110 money, and it really, we're not a billable program. So it was funding that was significant for us, allowed us to do the work that we do over the last few years. Pay very close attention to the process of Measure 110, because it's very interesting. We applied for renewal for the 110 funds, and we may not get it. An organization from Portland wants to come down and implement two programs under their purvey, and so we're kind of on the bubble. So it's an interesting process, how that rolling out of funds has been done. So, but like, it's been amazing. Like, I see the results. Like, we've built a workforce capacity through 110 money, and it's pretty evident. And I don't know where we'd be without it.
I'd just like to go on the record. We haven't gotten any money from Measure 110, nor would I apply for it. But I have lost several friends that I think, in part, because of Measure 110. I've had a lot of friends that have died due to overdoses, and people that we've invested a lot of love and time and care into. There's a lot of people who are damaged in the hospital because, currently, because of things that have happened to them during their, trying to stay warm while high, and things like that, that Measure 110 did a, reaped terrible, terrible consequences in the population that I serve. And so, you know, it's, whatever good has come, has come at a terrible cost.
Thank you, Brian. Eric, did you have anything else? Indra?
Sorry, I'm bad with the microphone, too. You mentioned that since the J Street camp closed, you saw people leaving. And so I'm wondering if anyone else has seen that, too, if maybe more people went to the Gospel Rescue Mission? And then also, to expand on that, there's a lot of confusion about the numbers of who is actually out there. So, I mean, can we get a little bit of a consensus, maybe, on how many, what percentage are out-of-the-area people that are here, living homeless? How many are elderly, over 65, versus how many are drug addicted? I'd just like to get, I hear so many different numbers. I'd like to see if we can get a general answer to that.
Yeah, and see, that's a really good question. There's a lot of different numbers floating out there, and that's one of the things that the Build for Zero initiative does. It's data-driven. It gets names, it gets statistics, their age. That's one of the first things that they do. As you go, it's getting a database on who's, keeping with HIPAA laws and Title IV laws, definitely. But it's getting a database on who's homeless, why they're homeless, and what their needs are. And I think once we can implement something like that, we'll probably get a better estimate. From anywhere, from what I hear, though, we have anywhere from 200 to 300 homelessness, people actually experiencing homelessness in the area. Like I said, I don't know if that's a definite number, but I believe once we get a system in place where we can start getting names and figuring out, we can get a better, a better number. We'll know more once we do that.
And before you start, I want to expand on that question, because this was kind of one of the things I actually talked, or I wrote down while you guys were conversating. A lot of you guys had talked about tracking, about how tracking the individuals that you were helping. Can you, let's just go from you and go all the way over. Can you explain exactly how your organization, what's the definition of tracking? How are you tracking these people? What information are you actually pulling from the people that you're helping? If you could just expand with that, thanks.
You got it. So technically, there is a way for us as a community to get data reports on how many people and their ages and what they're going through. I mean, it's the point-and-time count. That's what happened here last week. On the 29th, we have a whole time period where all the agencies get together. Everybody facilitates this big, huge hurrah to go and seek out anybody who is homeless. And they don't have to access services, but it is for us to identify who's homeless, what demographic they are, their ages. It's to talk about if they're a veteran, if they're not, if they have children. And I will say, just what you're seeing in the parks is not the only homeless people that there are. A lot of the individuals who are homeless are people staying in their cars, or hiding out, or, I mean, there are people with families and children, and they don't want to go down and go to a camp. They want to go somewhere where they feel like it's more safe for them. And I don't want to say it like it's not safe, because that's not my intention. But for them, when they look at it, they don't feel safe. So they stay in a car, they stay in an RV, they stay in a hidden space, they stay in the woods. You know, if you go up into our, I mean, I've lived through my entire life going up Spencer Mountain. When I was in high school, that was my jam. And I go up there now, and there's, you know, places where it's now where people live. And you can see that there have been people who have had camps there, and that's where they're hiding out. But there are systems in place to count the individuals in our communities. That's what it's there for. That's why we come together and build this huge, you know, system of collaboration with everybody, is so we can get those numbers to accurately identify who's out there, you know, and I mean, who's out there as in like, who they are, what are the ages, what's going on in their lives. Our coordinated entries are systematically used for that purpose specifically. We ask higher affected questions, you know, things that are very detailed, very personal, that they don't feel comfortable always just, you know, answering for anybody. And some of those questions are basic, like, you know, how do you get your drugs? If you're doing drugs, how do you get your drugs? What are the things that you would do to get drugs? I mean, we ask some pretty comfortable questions to make sure that we're getting the right information, so that we can report back to our funders, so we can get better funding to be able to provide the services we need to. But that's what Point and Time is for, is that specifically. So we actually do have those numbers. We actually do have statistics and all of that stuff that I am happy to send you from last year. This year's is obviously still going, because we have a good couple days left. But if you guys want to know what those are, we do have that.
Yeah, can, don't give up. I got a specific question for you now, because you, obviously, you Ken was kind of spearheading the point-and-time count, correct? Can you, and I know you just said, there's lots of questions and all that stuff, but can you basically define the criteria that you guys utilize to count somebody as homeless? Is there a summary? Is there a small definition that you can give us?
For us, homelessness is basically anybody who is living on the streets, under a bridge. Most of our funding is chronic homeless. Most of our funding is actual HUD-determined homelessness, which is out on the streets. So it's not people couch surfing. For us, you know, most of our funds is basically anybody who is outside of a home, doesn't have a home, doesn't have a place to go, that's homeless.
Thank you for the clarification.
Or sometimes fleeing domestic violence.
And does that align with, is that align with what the state's definition is?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we track a lot of data points. We have, actually, the state requires us to use, I can't remember how many data points, like 50-some data points, for measurement outcome tracking system for the state. So our intake paperwork is fairly large. That does include questions on housing and current address. We do not ask previous address, so I can't address if somebody's not from here or just coming in. But there's a lot of data points, including where you're living now, are you in treatment coming in? So we look and ask if, like, if they're in residential treatment now, or if they're in independent housing, if they're in assisted living, are they in foster care? We ask all different variety of housing questions.
We have the same million-question state reporting requirements that Option has. So we have, I mean, it's like if you go into a new, a medical clinic for the first time, you're establishing care, plus some. So we have all of that data, and then, and that's reported throughout. We also track our own internal measures, plus all the measures that we have for the, like, 20 different grants that we have. So there's a lot of data. I think the core question, my sense is, you know, are these folks from out-of-area that are coming here and using the resources? And from our experience and looking at the home counties that people have, the vast majority of people that we have in emergency housing and in our three residential programs are from Jackson and Josephine County. There's a small percentage of folks that are coming from other counties because of our Moms and Dads program specifically, and, you know, because they're attempting to not, you know, lose custody of their child, and be able to have them in care with them. So we have some of those folks, but they exit, they go back to their, to wherever they're from when they graduate. The only area that I see people, probably, I mean, it's still less than 10% of the referrals that we get, are people from rural northern California that were the closest, our Medford locations or Cave Junction are the closest resource for those folks sometimes. So they are applying for services, but because they don't have OHP, a lot of times, that's, you know, we're not a good resource for them, for that. But for the most part, it's overwhelmingly Jackson and Josephine County individuals that we're serving.
So with Options and OnTrack, you guys, what do you do with somebody that doesn't have any ID whatsoever? Because I know Cassie's mentioned before that they help people get ID that don't have ID that are on the street and stuff like that. So do you guys turn people away with that ID, or is there an option for you to help them out?
Yeah, we also help them get ID, or connect them with somebody else who can. And we have funding, I mean, it's hard to say whether or not that will be ongoing, but we do have funding for people who are uninsured. So we can bridge a gap for whatever services, for outpatient or residential, whatever. We can bridge a gap while we help get them enrolled in the right benefits, get their ID, and do that sort of thing.
Thank you.
The same at Options, exactly what Summer said.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so at Mint, we currently track our data through our medical forms that we do through our providers and nurses, and then our case manager as well. And I've brought metrics multiple times to city council, and I'm more than happy to email that out to you guys. We collect data quarterly, and I'll just start kind of looping you guys in on that. But that is how we currently collect data. I'm going to pass it over to Tony, because I had another point, but I forgot. I'm sorry, I'm not feeling super great. So I'm going to pass it over to him, so I can remember, and then I'll steal the microphone back.
I'll pass it back to you gladly. So serving youth and young adults and homelessness, we utilize the McKinney-Vento definition of homeless youth and children. So basically, it says, McKinney-Vento Act defines homeless children and youth as individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. So we do track, we use HMIS, that access... residence. So we, we do track, we use HMIS that, that access is kind of overseas in Medford, and then my friend down there in the black helps with, Holly, sorry, my friend. No, the first one. So they're, they're big supporters of, of helping us manage HMIS. If you have a federal contract for homeless youth, homelessness, you're kind of required to use it. So there's a lot of, man, it's pretty rich with information, service history, age, is a person have been at risk of trafficking, been involved in trafficking, addiction. It's, it's a very rich source of data, and we use that a lot. We, we track, we track everything. I can tell you numbers of kids we've served in each of our programs, how long they've stayed. If I dig deep enough, I can tell you lots of things about kids. So, I mean, we, data drives kind of all of our decisions, how we help kids, how we do better in certain areas. We have this one West Coast Framework assessment that we do, and it showed we had gains. We do a pre and a post. We had gains in everything except teaching kids how to read. So it's not really something we focus a lot on, but that was kind of the only area that, that had a little tiny gain. So I won't tell you all that stuff. And then, numbers of homelessness, I think we probably have 200 or 300 just in the school district with kids. Like, and we, like, like, it's been said, like, there's so much homelessness, technically speaking, across our community, and it's just not at the parks. It's families doubled up, kids doubled up, kids living in RVs, families living in RVs out in the middle of nowhere. Like, it's, the problem is significant when you really look at the entirety.
And I'm, I'm, I know you want to talk, Cassie, one second. So we, I'm, I'm looking out the window, and I'm still seeing the snow coming down. We're, we're past our two-hour mark here. If you guys want to bear with us for a few more minutes, we can, we can field these questions, but, you know, I kind of want to get a group consensus, because we're, we are a little over time, so maybe 15 more minutes or so. Is that okay?
I know. My daughter's like, do I drive? And I'm like, I don't want you driving.
So, so realistically, I mean, Cassie, I'll let you, I'll let you add your last point, and then we'll, we can adjourn that. I mean, obviously, we want to have you guys back here, and I, it's, we're inclement weather here. I know, I'm getting texts from my kids too, they're getting out of school. But let's let Cassie finish, and then we'll, we'll finish up here.
Just real quick, the whole point of that, the demographics. So like, we hear you guys loud and clear. You want to understand who are these people, you know, and where are they from. So one thing that we have been doing for our emergency shelter is when people come in, we're starting to track, you know, I go in and I, after they check in, I go, hey, if I don't know them, a lot of times I do, but if I don't know them, I ask them, you know, how long you been here, where are you from, and get that information. And there are people from out of town that are coming in and passing through, but I think that all of us can agree that the people that engage in services are the ones from here. The ones we're helping are the ones from here, and they want to stay in our community, and they call this home. It's very rare that I come across someone who wants to. Right now, I have a 72-year-old woman who came here from California six months ago to live with her grandma, because she was homeless, or her daughter, because she was homeless down here, and then got in altercation with a daughter, and she's homeless here now. I mean, that's an example of an out-of-towner, but that's rare.
Hey, Brian, let's finish up, if you can add to that a little bit quickly, or?
I've got nothing good to add. It's, you know, there's, you're, you're asking for a number that's a moving target, and it's really elusive. And, you know, the, the point in time count, I've been watching the point in time count for over 15 years. The number, it, it is always increasing, but, but even the people that are giving that say, we're not getting it all. They suspect that they're not catching everything that's out there. People have to be willing to come in and, and give the information, and there's just plenty of people who, you know, some people move out to the woods because they don't want to be found. And so they're not, they're not actually interested in, in those kinds of things, and that just becomes challenging. And that's really what I've got. I, I don't, I don't, partake in the point in time count. It's outside of my wheelhouse. I work with the folks that are coming in saying, hey, I don't want to be out there anymore, and I am, I need something different. Can you give me that? And that's what we do, so.
Thank you. And I want to thank all of you guys for participating in this, and I really, I want to look everybody in the eye and deeply encourage you to continue collaboration. It looks like Jeremy's going to have something coming up here in the near future, as well as the councils. Again, this is part one of a series that we're going to be doing, and we're all here. You can see the passion everybody has and the love for the city, and I think we're just going to try to collaborate to see if we can help our community get better. We know it's going to be a long, arduous road, but I appreciate all your guys' time, and thank you. So just directing this back to council, since we kind of went pretty long here, and we were kind of focused on this, I was going to kind of table the rest of business until, until later, so.
We need agenda review.
We can do agenda review in the next one. Okay, so Victoria, I was, was just looking at the, here, it wasn't on here, so I was like, okay. So we can just take a small segment here and do our agenda review. Does anybody have anything to add or subtract, or want to discuss about the agenda that you should have in your, in front of you? Yes, sir, Joel?
I had two items. One was, what is the existing status of the FireWise program? There's been some changes in that. It isn't a, we don't have to do this next time we meet, but within the next two months, we need to know what is the status of the FireWise program, given the insurance and the high risk out, out there that the state came up with for mapping. It's a joint program we have with the county, and I think we've run into some bumps along the way. So we just need to know what, what is the status of the FireWise program, and what can we do, or what should we do with it?
Are, are you looking for information, or are you looking for maybe a collaboration presentation with county people, or I'm, I'm spitballing here?
At this point, at this point in time, I was looking for information. If we were at the, at the point in time where collaboration would be necessary, I would leave that up to the city manager and the mayor and the council president.
Yeah, maybe I, so, not to go into details, I can give a brief memo, but really, there is a FireWise program still in place. The county has the coordination of that. We did have a partnership at one time. We had one FireWise coordinator, they had another. The county did reallocate funding to other allowable uses with those dollars, which eliminated our FireWise person. Are those funds still available? They could be. Are they allocated differently? The county has ultimate say on how it's allocated. If you're wanting something different, then maybe we need to send a memo to count to the board of commissioners.
So without going into specifics, and what impact does that have on our citizens, both within the city limits and outside the city limits, in terms of their fire insurance, terms of their fire protection, in terms of fire support for fire prevention and, and abating wildfire?
So Mayor, if you'd like, I can give a memo to council with regards to what the FireWise program is.
The present status of it.
Yeah, that's, Aaron said he could give a memo to that for, for informational purposes. I said, so basically, let, let Aaron get a memo out to us for informational, and if anybody wants to add to it, if we can expand on that conversation, and we could address that at a, at a later date.
Okay, that's going to be a big topic coming up, well, it already is.
Understand.
The second thing I had was, I'd like to request an executive session with our, our lawyer to discuss the lawsuit that's against us, and what's going on.
We do have one scheduled for Wednesday.
Okay, good.
Correct. And I got word that our representative counsel will, will be a little bit late, so basically, it will be at the end of the, end of the regular meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Rob?
Yeah, I'm not sure how much current council's aware of the property that we purchased with URA funds last year, the Midland-Washington property. The, you know, the big, broad brushstrokes of that were, we, at some point, wanted to get out an RFP to some, some builder or some developer to create a lot more housing there. And it wasn't, you know, council had not, really had no specific ideas as to whether that would be low-income, more workforce housing, whatever it would be. But I'd like to have a workshop on what the next steps would be, what the next steps that council would take, or that we would have to ask staff to take, to take that, the, to take the next step, as far as, at some point in the coming years, turning that five or six-acre property into housing, which is what I believe it was purchased to do. And I think that we're probably all want to see more housing there. But again, what the next steps are, I would certainly think that council would want to know. So I'd like to get that in a workshop.
That, that sounds good, and I, I agree with you, Rob, because I think even educating all the new people on, on, you know, where that stands, that is a great idea. So we will try to squeeze that in as, when we possibly can. And Victoria?
Along those lines, that might be something that would good, be good to fit into the February 18th workshop, Rob, in that I want to propose to change, to take out the Public Safety Service and Funding and the Select Public Safety Advisory Committee-Council Liaison, those two portions of the February 18th, and to extend and go on with our homelessness workshop series. Rob's suggestion that we talk about the property on Washington would fit in here, and I want to replace those two items that are on the February 18th workshop and replace them with a joint county and council workshop. I've spoken with one, one commissioner, yes. And so to have all of us here, they would just have to make a public meeting notice, and to bring them in along with business proposals. It's, it's a, a little bit of what Rob was talking about, and so that the council and the commissioners are able to hear a community business proposal. It would fit along with what a lot of the people were saying here about, you know, the difficulty of getting a place developed for the kinds of spaces that they need. And I have, I, I can't go over the outline of it, but I do, I have a presentation from people that are, that are ready to go, that can come and give us. It would be a 40, 50-minute presentation, so, but it could be in sync with what Rob is saying. It's looking at properties, and it would be joint county and city. So for the, so if, so I am proposing that if there are two other counselors who'd like to do that, then maybe we could just get that taken care of right now.
Okay, sidebar here, one second. Public Safety Service and Funding and Public Safety Advisory Committee Liaison, is there any, because one of them's got four stars on it, so does that have some kind of?
That's 40 minutes.
Time constraint on it?
No, that, that one is specifically staff, so we can move that to whatever date council feels appropriate. We're ready to give that presentation anytime. So if you'd like to push it back, we can do that, if you'd like to replace it with, like, say, a joint board of commissioners, city council meeting. We've done that in the past, where we have the board commissioner seated here, and we had a joint meeting just to discuss areas of interest or collaboration.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure that we, we didn't have any time-sensitive stuff on that.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with that.
Okay, so we got Kathleen, and we got Eric. So that will be done. Do we, okay, so we would be?
Could, could we keep on the, appointing the liaison? That's just appointing one of you to attend their meeting. It's going to be towards the end of the month, as a liaison for the Public Safety Advisory Committee?
Oh, to choose?
It's just choosing one of you to add. Yeah.
That'll be pretty quickly, quick, right?
So on the joint meetings, what we've done in the past, if this is how council would like to proceed with this, on the joint meetings between the board of commissioners and city council, we'd have Karen reach out to the board of commissioners and, and ask if they have any specific items that they would like to discuss jointly with us. They provide us with one or three, or one to three items. We would put that on the agenda, along with any items that council specifically wanted to discuss. So if there's those items that you'd like to see on the agenda, I just need clarification on what that is, agenda items are. We'll ask the board of commissioners if they have some also, and we'll put that together to have a joint meeting.
So just to clarify, the, the topic that you want to have presented, Victoria, is a, an additional series within the homeless topic and revolving around low-income housing?
It would be a series. It would be emergency.
Sorry.
Oh, I didn't turn it off before. So it would be all of the above. So emergency, transitional, and then permanent low-income housing.
So you said that you have somebody that wants to present. Are you looking for more information from staff, is where I'm trying to get at?
No, not necessarily.
I mean, like, for the staff to present, or you just want to open a spot for, for this person to, I'm just trying to clarify here.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's just for that, but then Rob is, is saying that there was this.
We can work in the Washington Street. Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it, it would fit with it perfectly, actually.
Okay, okay. So just to clarify, Aaron, you understand that there, we'd be educational workshop on the state of the existing Washington Street property, as well as this one presenter that?
And possible of the.
Yes, I, I believe that the Washington Street campuses, Council Pell mentioned, is, could be relatively complex. That's, that would take, I think, 30 to 40 minutes easily. I don't know if that's the appropriate time to bring in the board of commissioners in a joint meeting. I think if you wanted to do that, it'd almost be a workshop in itself with the board of commissioners, unless you would like to have that separate. I think maybe council as a whole, as a policy board, may want to have a general discussion about what your thoughts are moving forward, and then maybe approaching the board of commissioners at a later date after you've had a discussion on what you'd like to have. But if you'd like to have that discussion with you as a policy board, with another policy board on what you would like to see with Washington campus, you can. But I believe that's more, it adds a full layer of complexity to it, that I'm concerned about the number of topics that might be coming up. It may be a very long workshop.
Okay, so it sounds like, let's just keep it to, still a joint session, in regards to just the presentation that you were, that you would give Aaron the information for?
Yes.
Because he's got to reach out to him. Okay. And then the Washington Street property, we will push that to a later date in?
We'll find time to put it on the back.
So we'll put it on the back. Okay. Did we address, yes, Indra?
I have a concern. So we have an action item, and I'm just looking, going forward. So we're scheduling these workshops, which is great, but we're not getting any information on what we're actually going to be voting on in the meeting. And so that leaves us all to go around one-on-one or two-on-two, especially new counselors, to ask questions, because I have questions about this Wednesdays. So now I'm going to have to go to, to Aaron, to the planning department, because I don't understand a lot of the zoning stuff. And so it's my understanding, in workshops, we would learn about the things we're going to be facing to vote on in Wednesday, and it doesn't seem like we're going in that direction. So that's just a big concern of mine.
So that's a, that's a great question. Thank you, council. There is a, a learning curve that we're all experiencing right now. And so if you've got specific items, you as a council member have specific items, and a question about an item on the agenda that maybe you'd like additional clarification on, please reach out to me, and we'll get you that information. On some of these things, like looking, let's say it's a public hearing, there's only so much that we could do in advance, because there's quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial issues to where we can, we have to provide you and all of council in a quasi-judicial planning issue, the same information, basically at the same time, so you can make a decision together. And if not, it'd be ex parte contact, and then therefore, you may not be able to participate in the decision if it's a public hearing process. So depending on what it is, we can give you a lot more information, or maybe we'd have to hold that information for an actual public hearing, as it may be deemed. So I'd say, just reach out to me, I'll, we'll talk about the packet, and I'll, I'll talk to you about process, or if there's more information, we can get you. Because we want you to feel comfortable about making decisions on the dais. There's many things that may be coming to you, and you may feel it's rushed, and that's okay. Sometimes there's a lot of pressure, something comes up, and you're like, oh, man, I have to make a decision right now. A lot of times, that's not the case. We need to assess, is there a true timeframe associated with it? Is it an emergency? Is it an emergency that is created by an individual? Is it a city, is it a city-ish emergency, what it is? Because oftentimes, a subject Because oftentimes, a subject matter will come up or will come into a packet and it may be tabled for another week, in two weeks or a month. So you as a council can feel comfortable about decision you're making. That is a key point. The only thing that we've got time constraints with are those planning public things where we have to have a turnaround time of 120 days. Now there, we don't have the opportunity to really table things that often. But a lot of the other things, we have time to take a breath and to give you more opportunity to digest information, even if we're doing a presentation on the same subject two business meetings in a row. That's okay. Staff doesn't mind that. We want you to feel comfortable. So I want to make sure that that's an important piece.
Yeah, and it's going to get more familiar and familiar, but one thing that you do have to scramble on a lot is the land use stuff that comes from the UAPC, so. Rick?
Two quick questions on the backside on strategic planning. Do we have an estimated date when we might have that?
There have been a number of issues between this workshop, which I think was a success for you today, that has taken my priorities, along with a number of other issues that have come up recently, what you're aware of and will be aware of, that I have not had any opportunity to spin on strategic planning, so I do not have a date at this time.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, just a matter, on the April 14th, it says already, Colleen Padilla, I believe she's no longer with them. Now, just not asking for an answer, just making a note there. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody else got anything else? Nope. All right, then I'll say this workshop is adjourned. Thank you very much for your time.